Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Cod Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, April 22nd Board of Selectmen's meeting. The first item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is a proclamation for Arbor Day, which is April 30, 2019. Mr. Jones?
Great.
Thank you. That's the right one.
It is.
Right.
Whereas the town of Falmouth benefits from the graceful canopy of tree limbs that shade us from the blazing summer sun, purify our air of contaminants, provide a restful respite, a peaceful respite from the ordinary world, and generally beautify our community. And whereas the town has been recognized by a national program as known far and wide as a tree city, and whereas the Falmouth Tree Warden, Falmouth Garden Club, Falmouth Public Schools, and Falmouth Beautification Council recognizes the aesthetic value of the beautiful trees of Falmouth by organizing a day to celebrate the purity and strength exemplified by a statuesque tree and all living green things, and thereby honor the trees of Falmouth by singing songs, sharing thoughts, and teaching more about the value of trees. And now therefore we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English Braga, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 30, 2019, as Arbor Day. I so move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I see our tree wardens here. Thanks for coming and celebrating this really nice recognition.
Madam Chair, could you make a couple of comments on the ceremony coming up?
Step right up. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Pearson, Tree Warden. Yes, this year Arbor Day will be hosted at Mullen Hall School. We're going to be planting five trees for each class. We're going to have different stations teach different things about trees and agriculture. So it should be a good time, and hopefully all you guys can...
That'd be great. Thank you very much. I appreciate you working with the schools. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation regarding Art Week, which is April 26 to May 5. Ms. Patterson, or Ms. Brown, right.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas Art Week is an award-winning creative festival celebrating the richness of arts, cultural, and creative communities throughout Massachusetts, including Falmouth, with many free events that are hands-on, interactive, and offer behind-the-scenes access to the creative process and creative economy. Whereas Art Week is celebrated in Falmouth, as well as over 125 other communities representing every region across the state, including greater Boston, north of Boston, south of Boston, Cape Cod of the islands, central Massachusetts, and western Massachusetts. Whereas Art Week is a unique nonprofit community program of the BACH Center and Highland Street Foundation, and is supported by an expansive network of statewide, regional, and local media partners who have donated more than 2.8 million in pro bono advertising to date, creating a salute to the vital economic impact of the Commonwealth's creative treasures, including a spotlight in Falmouth. Whereas Art Week applauds Falmouth as a creative community and celebrates the diversity of cultural and creative assets available to those who live, work, play, and visit here. Whereas Art Week celebrates the power of arts, culture, and creativity to strengthen Falmouth's education system, build a robust and creative workforce, support community health and wellness, and create a strong community. Whereas Art Week in Falmouth is part of making creative history by driving record-breaking growth this year across the state, serving as an affordable and accessible place for people of all ages and socio-economic backgrounds to uniquely explore and express their creativity, since over 70% of events are free. Whereas Art Week in Falmouth is what makes the Bay State's most creative festival so special, providing increased access to creative experiences and equitable participation while building a better, connected, inclusive, and resilient Commonwealth. Now therefore we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English Braga, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim April 26 through May 5, 2019, as Art Week Falmouth. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and caused a great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, April 22, 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here to talk about Art Week? Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll be very brief, because it was a rather long proclamation, so I apologize for that. My name is Laura Recford. I'm Executive Director of the Falmouth Arts Center, and thank you for declaring April 26 to May 5 Art Week. We have a number of events at the Falmouth Arts Center, including our biggest event is Saturday, May 4, from 10 to 3. We are free and open to the public, as we always are, but that day we'll have about a dozen of our art teachers' clay, fiber, and painting all there to give hands-on demonstration and instruction to anyone who wants to come of any age. And I should mention, we have several other events during that nine-day period of Art Week, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that this Saturday, Arts Falmouth, which is a different group, but I'll give them a plug, is having the Trad Stroll in Woods Hole, which is an excellent event. Highfield Hall has an event. There are a number of events all over town through those 10 days, and so we thank you for supporting Art Week.
Absolutely. Our pleasure. Thank you very much. The next item is recognition, Ms. Braga.
So it's been, we've had sort of a week in between, but I just wanted to give a huge thanks to FCTV for all the work that they do when we have town meeting. You know, they get there well in advance of anybody who's coming to town meeting, selectmen, members of any committees, and they stay there long after we've left. It's a very big process, but obviously, most of the individuals in town don't attend in person, but having the type of work that FCTV does allows people to really feel like they're able to participate, understand what's going on. If they can't watch it that night, you know, they do a great job rerunning it so people can actually see for themselves. They don't have to get an interpretation from anyone else, or just a summary, you know, in a paper. So, just a huge thank you. It's such a community resource, and you know, they're going through a big transition. They've built out, they have a bigger space over there. So hopefully, folks, you know, it's available to anyone here in the community to use in ways that promote things that you're interested in, or things that you're passionate about, and it's a really great resource to understand what's going on in the community. So thank you to them for all of their hard work. It's a lot of hours that they put in.
And it's a nonprofit, so you can donate. Great idea for recognition. On the announcement front, I'm just going to quickly say, I think this is the longest agenda we've ever had, so I'm going to push everyone to be concise in their points. That said, we are very happy to see you all, and we appreciate the opportunity folks have to make announcements and talk about their initiatives. So, thanks for that. Any other announcements from the board?
Just a minute.
Steph, please.
Madam Chair, we have the one on the Board of Health on glyphosate, and members of the board have a copy of a decision that was announced by the Board of Health for a temporary moratorium on the use of glyphosate on municipal property that will continue until March 31, 2020. There is a variance process with the Board of Health for any urgencies that someone would like to argue for, but we just wanted to officially note that, Madam Chair.
And where is that going to be posted? On the health section of the website, I would think?
Yes.
Great.
But the moratorium is only on use on town properties, is that right?
Correct. Only on municipal property.
So it's not a moratorium for the public to use on their own properties?
Correct. It's not a private property or for the sale of glyphosate privately by whatever businesses might be selling it.
Having said that, if the Board of Health is asking for a moratorium in town-owned property, I would certainly think it would make sense for the public to consider it themselves also, but the rule is not saying that they have to.
Correct. Ms. Braga?
Just an announcement in general. In the next coming weeks, folks are going to hear some more information. The Board, this reminded me, because it's the Board of Health, so Board of Health, Human Services, Police and Fire, the Board of Selectmen, and the Falmouth Substance Abuse Commission. I hope I haven't left anyone out, but they're going to be getting together and inviting, what we're trying to do is invite our legislators to come and hear from the community, number one, to sort of, it's a two-pronged thing. So have some information from those departments, from those committees that I just mentioned, about issues around, some of the stuff that Doug Brown has talked a lot about, so around sober homes, what we can and cannot do. There's a lot of misinformation about the role that the town has, and about what some of those, some of the options are. So we'll have some informational pieces around that. We'll hear from some of the department heads, we'll hear from the Chief of Police and Fire Chief Smalls about how that's, you know, impacting their departments. And then, the goal really will primarily be for the public to be able to have a discussion, make comments, get feedback, or have interaction with your elected state reps and our state senator, who are the individuals who are on Beacon Hill, where the legislation is made that kind of addresses a lot of the stuff we've heard about in the community. So we're putting that together. Obviously, it's a lot of moving parts, but we do have a commitment, I can say, from our, all of our legislators, that they're willing to participate. We just have to find a way to, the right time that fits, and so we just, we want the community to understand that this is happening, we're putting this together, we're organizing it, and we'll have more details in the coming weeks, once we have a better idea of what the timeline will be.
Thank you for that important forum coming up. Next item on the agenda, summary of actions, licenses. We have, oops, did I, oh, I missed public comment. I'm racing along too fast. First, is there anyone here for a public comment? Mark. This is an opportunity for folks to speak for two minutes on a subject that's not already on the agenda.
Thank you. Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I have a couple of things I want to address, but first being the Article 29 that I had in town meeting regarding the second water meter. After town meeting, I was thinking about it, and then I realized that some of the presentation from the water department, sewer department, was in error. They basically made the claim that the, first off, the translated, the arguments were, "We know we're overcharging you, but we need the money." They really can't tell how much it costs to run that until they have hitched all the houses up to the sewer, because with the electricity and efficiency of pumps and things, the second half of that is much cheaper than the first half. So, the fact still remains that we are the only town in the state that I could find, and for the country for that matter, that deals with it the way they do. And also, I'd like to remind everybody that May 21 is Election Day, and you have till Wednesday, May 1, to register to vote, and the wonderful girls at the clerk's office will be there until 8 o'clock at night. Also, you can do it online. SecretaryofState, or secretary.state, mass.us will get you there, quick and easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finer. Anybody else? The next item, we're starting with licenses. The first is whether to approve an application for one-day wine and malt liquor license. Coast Fest Band Shell Marina Park, Saturday, August 3, 2019. Step right up if you would, sir. Let us know. A couple of details on this.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. It's a one-day concert from 4 to 10 p.m. We have a great eclectic lineup of bands playing. We'll be co-headlining along with a band called The Enth Power, a funk R&B band from New Orleans.
Could you back up a second and introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Luke Voss. Hi. How's everyone doing tonight? Nice to meet you. I'm one of the producers of the event, and also performing it. We're donating $1 per ticket sold to the Falmouth Bandparents. We've worked with them before, they're a great organization. I'm trying to think what else. Yeah, and we just want to have a great activity for the community. I've traveled around and played some events like this in other towns, and always thought that it'd be really fun to produce one here, so.
Go ahead, Megan.
Do you anticipate that it'll be something that's sort of family-friendly?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and I made sure that the lineup we put together was something that'd be comfortable people being able to hear, you know, who didn't necessarily pay to be there, you know. So, I made sure everything was appropriate for an outdoor event like that.
Great, Doug.
So, I've been involved with concerts there before. We had the reunion of Summers Past concerts that I was on the board with.
Yep.
And we did have some people that were a little concerned with the noise, so on our last one, we stopped playing at 9 instead of 10. How late do you actually plan to play?
I'd like to play till, like, obviously a hard cutoff at 10. When I applied earlier, that was the time they gave me. So I'd say, like, 9:50, be really done with the music, and then have people clearing out by then. I know it's always a concern, is the sound, and there's kind of only so much you can do.
It also depends on how loud you play it. We had Steve Smith and the Nekits for the last act, and they never want to play quietly, so.
Right. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Have we received an application for this event yet? This is just the liquor license that we have in front of us tonight, right?
Yeah, the event was approved, is my understanding.
I couldn't remember whether we had already done that, or whether it was coming, but if we've already done that, it must have been ones that...
It went in front of a different board for that one, that was the, maybe the Public Safety Board or somebody. Special event. Thank you.
Check on that?
Yeah, we'll confirm that.
Thank you. We'll confirm that for you.
Okay.
Make sure everything's in line. Any other questions? No? I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item is whether to approve an application for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for Barnstable County Agricultural Society Harvest Fest at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on Saturday, September 28, and Sunday, September 29, 2019. Anyone hear from the fairgrounds? What would the board like to do?
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is whether to approve an application for nine one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses for Falmouth Theater Guild Highfield Theater, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, May 3, 4, 5, 10, 11, 12, 17, 18, and 19 of 2019. Is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, and Luke, okay, thank you. Just letting you know, you're all set.
Okay. Thanks.
Next is whether to approve an application for a motor vehicle Class II license for XL Auto Repair and Sales at 94 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Come right up, sir. Please introduce yourself at the podium.
My name is Pierre Carros.
And you're here to request an application for a Class II license?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us what the business is.
It's auto repair and auto sales.
Great. Any questions?
Similar to the existing business? Similar to what they're doing there now?
Yes, it's exactly the same. I'm just applying for the same exact license.
Okay.
Okay, so no change? We had good feedback that there were no concerns from any departments that were consulted. We did. Is there a motion? Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda, administrative orders, is whether to approve an ever-source petition to install one new four-inch conduit into handholds on Hudson Street, south of Lake Lehman Road, for Service 248 Hudson.
I would move approval. Second.
Any concerns?
I echo that the engineering recommendation is to approve the request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is whether to vote to support House Bill Number 2881 and Senate Bill Number 452S, seeking a five-cent deposit on nip bottles. I, we're short of time, but I think I'll take two members from the audience, if anybody wants to make a quick comment before the board comments. Please.
Thank you. Alan Robinson. In general, very much supportive of anything that would do to reduce litter here in Falmouth, and we certainly have more nips on the ground than I've seen anyplace else. It's amazing. I'm sure other towns in the Cape have the same problem, but there are plenty of them here. I have one concern, and that is, since there's legislation in the state to redefine the definition of beverage and include nips as a beverage, and thus subject to what is currently a, the five-cent return requirement, concerned there's a, if there's any possibility at all that by doing that, if the legislature does that, that it would preclude a municipality, a town, if they wanted to, to ban the sale of nips within the town. I have no idea that, no one has told me that would be the case, but there's always the law of unintended consequences.
It's a very valid point. So, I've been working with Randy Hunt, Representative Hunt, on the legislation which he's been driving. He's one of the important drivers, and the question was brought to him. He's going to have the State House Counsel review it, on number one. And also, our own town council has opined that, you know, this would be something that would drive the town's reaction going forward, as to whether we have some municipal banning as well. So it might make sense to table this a little bit until we get some answers to those questions, but I think this is a great opportunity to publicize the fact to everyone that this is moving in the right direction, and, you know, questions should be asked, and the indications are that something that will be very workable will be forthcoming, if there's support in the community, and it seems like there is.
That's great. The idea of deferring until you get that information is...
Absolutely. Ms. Schneider? Welcome.
I'm Schneider, Precinct 4, and also a member of the Falmouth Litter Reduction Team. My husband and I walked along Davisville and picked up trash for two blocks, 90 nip bottles, 90, in two blocks. Interestingly, I just came from the Midwest. They don't know what the term nip means in the Midwest. I found that amazing, but I think it's because we have more open spaces and people feel more comfortable flinging things out into the open spaces. They don't feel as comfortable flinging them right along the road where people would see them do it. But I, my concern on this is, five cents isn't going to change why people do drink a nip and throw it out of the car. That isn't going to change. It might make people encouraged to go out and pick up trash along the road if they can collect and turn them in, but I do also think there's some consideration for the redemption centers on what it would cost them to redesign their areas to take in yet another type of bottle, and what that expense would be, and I fear that something like this wouldn't change the behavior of the perpetrators, and it would end up bringing lobbyists out because of the expense to the redemption centers. Just a thought, and somehow we have to get to the real problem. Thank you.
That might be something Representative Hunt would be very interested in hearing as well. Thank you very much. So is it the board's desire to table this for the time being, pending more information?
Yes, I know we reached out to Frank earlier today, and he, just with that exact concern that Alan raised, that was brought forward by maybe Peter, Peter Wasdorff or some, someone, but, so anyway, I know we're waiting for some further information from a number of sources, so I'd move to table it.
Only technically, table is only for today, so...
Okay, so to continue it, then.
Started that, so, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, whether to vote to approve an application to Massachusetts dredging program for 2019 Mass Works Grant of $20,000 to dredge Green Pond Channel. Mr. Susu, is there someone here to present?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier's here.
Yes. River Harbor Master Greg Fraser. Greg has provided some paperwork that's in the board packet on this proposal.
Yep. Thank you. Welcome.
Well, I think you have the actual application.
Yes, we do.
Last year was the first year of the Mass Works dredging program. We were successful in getting two grants. Unfortunately, we weren't able to perform either one of those by the time of year restriction of January 1. We're hoping that the county will be in town late September, early October, to do those two sites. This would be another dredge application. Hopefully, we could get the dredge to do this at the same time, so they're in town for three projects at the same time.
That'd be great. I see there's a dredge at West Falmouth Harbor.
Pardon me?
There's a dredge at West Falmouth Harbor right now.
It's a barge.
Ah.
Not a dredge.
Ah, okay.
And they're doing, they're putting in the, we'll be putting in the pilings for the new floats that are going in front of the bulkhead.
Oh, that makes sense. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Fraser?
I guess one quick question. Should we consider...
Should we consider trying to get a program to do our inner channels in September? I know we usually like to do our dredging in spring for winter, but it's always problematic. And would we benefit by try to focus on the inner channels during September?
Well, we can do that. We, any of the embayments are non-wavable, so we have to dredge them before January fifteenth or after June thirtieth. But we don't typically do embayment dredging unless there's a major problem. For instance, the Mass Works dredge project last year was for Yell River north of the Yocla.
Yeah.
That, we applied for a waiver and were turned down by the state. They just don't give them for embayments. So, that's why they'll be back in the fall to do that project. Those, the good part of that is that those typically don't refill or cause us a problem year after year. It takes a little while for those to build up where the inlets have to be done on an annual basis. Now, we'll caution the board and let you know that the situation as far as waivers has changed at the DEP. They're back to handling them differently than they did prior to Ken Chin's retirement and it looks like they will not issue waivers unless the dredging has actually begun and you're seeking a waiver for finishing a project that's already underway. Of course, that will affect Falmouth because we typically apply for inlet waivers to dredge in May and early June. We won't be able to get those if that policy continues. So, we're working, trying to work with the state and legislative delegation to go back to the way it was done before.
Thanks for covering that, that's gonna throw everything off if that continues, so appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
What, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is whether to vote to approve a license from the town of Falmouth to allow Eagle Scout candidate Sam Mack of Boy Scout Troop Forty-two to construct a trail near the Falmouth Dog Park. And is Mr. Mack available here? Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Just pretend that I'm standing here in a Boy Scout uniform. Sam's family...
Easy to do.
Had their flight canceled and they are, as I understand it, in a car driving from Florida because they could not get another flight. So, Sam sends his deepest apologies and he will promise to come and do an update to keep you informed and answer any concerns you might have. So, I said I would come and move this along so that if you have concerns, we, he can address them sooner than later.
That's great, so the board probably recognizes, typically, we see these Eagle projects and after they're done and sort of congratulate the scout. This is a, kind of a more sensitive project in terms of licensing and coming before the board and he's worked with the Falmouth Dog Park and something with Barbara, so he's had to do some preliminary work to even get this far. Are there any questions in terms of the plan of the project?
Joe is here also from the Rec Committee because this is on recreation land and the back part of the dog park is, of course, part of this one parcel that is recreation land. And so, Sam did go before the entire Rec Committee and gave his plan and they voted unanimously to support it.
That's great.
I was in attendance for that meeting and he did a good presentation, so I'm sure we'll get a great recap after it's done.
Do we know, who from the town's gonna be overseeing the work on the town property? Is there gonna be anybody that he's gonna be working with?
He's met with DPW and with Jeremiah because it is, of course, a park. It's part of a park and so as such, it really is under Jeremiah's purview. And he's gone over the plan, he's done, he's gone to Falmouth Engineering and collected the correct markers and staked it out. He always has one of his parents along with him when he's doing this work. And, believe me, the Dog Park Board and the Rec Board are watching this carefully.
Is there, from the lawyers on the board, is there anything about liability for something that is done by, in this instance, if something happens on this walk?
We would have to defer to town council, but I would say just the logic would be, that's one of the reasons to get a license from the town. There would be some coverage with respect to that. Mr. Johnson, stop, do you have any other thoughts on that?
We would have a waiver, you know, if it's not, it's probably incorporated into the license, but if not, there would be a waiver of liability.
I, I would say that it goes right along with the Dog Park Commonwealth General Laws also. If you do not charge for using it and it's town property, it's used at your own risk. The same as a dog coming to the dog park if, or going through the Beebe Woods. It is, people understand it's their own choice, just as if they were walking down a sidewalk.
Ms. Baragan.
Who would the license actually be granted to? Can we grant a license to a minor? Is someone else granting, is someone else sort of his sponsor? I don't, we don't need an answer now, but if we could follow up, I'm guessing we probably can't enter into a license with a minor. So, maybe we just make sure.
It could be his parents.
Maybe his parents, I mean, just something to get some feedback on.
Well, it's not a liquor license.
In that case, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is whether to approve the warrant for the annual town election on May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. You did just have it here a second ago?
I would approve the warrant.
Thank you.
I guess I would particularly point out that Precinct Two will be voting at the Senior Center instead of at the Rec Center. So, Precinct Two, voting this year, the polls will be at the Senior Center.
Lucky devils. Anything else on that? Is there a motion?
Move approval. Or second, was it already moved?
I'll make my motion a motion, sure.
Okay.
And that's the second, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is whether to approve the expenditure from the Historical Commission account for a temporary planning intern. Is there someone here? Hello, Ed.
Historical Commission Chair.
Yeah, I saw you, come right up. This looks interesting.
Ed, Chairman of the Historical Commission.
Can I just interrupt for a second just to announce that the seven-thirty hearing has been withdrawn for the applicants, so if anyone's here for the seven-thirty hearing, they have withdrawn the application, so we can now proceed to other business until seven forty-five here. Sorry, Ed.
Yep, thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
I had sent a little PowerPoint thing, I don't know if you have it, I can, do you have it, Peter? Just to quickly go through it. Oh, okay. Okay. This is the project, it's to review our current list of significant buildings to evaluate whether they should remain or not. The list of significant buildings was created, sorry. Oh, by utilizing a variety of tools, Form Bs and Macris. Macris is the mass historic website for, of all historic buildings in Massachusetts. The Falmouth GIS system, Google Maps. They would utilize these systems to evaluate the houses that are on there now, whether they should stay or not. Now, why would they come off? These are houses that, over the, the last time it was done, twenty years ago, they could be markedly altered where they really aren't significant anymore, they could be demolished, many of them have been demolished, or changed in a way where they really shouldn't be on there any, anymore. They'll use these guidelines to evaluate and make recommendations to the historical commissions on whether they should stay or not. That's really what the project is. Why? The list of significant buildings identifies significant historic homes outside the historic district. So, these are houses that we don't have any purview over at all, like we would do in the normal historic districts. The list hasn't been updated for over twenty years and the current list has over six hundred and fifty listings. Now, the, the list of significant buildings is required by the demolition delay bylaw. That is where if, if an applicant wants to demolish a house outside the historic district, they go to the building department to get a permit. The building department checks with the town clerk. If, if their list is on this, on the, if their house is on the list, if it is, they're subject to a delay. And currently, the demolition delay in Falmouth is a twelve-month delay. So, that's, that's the, one of the main uses of the list today is between the building department, the town clerk, and the historical commission. So, houses, like I said, could have changed over the years by demolition or alteration because they don't have any historic site. The, the reason here is we really want to make sure that the town is using a listing that has integrity and we don't, we can't vouch for the integrity of that list any longer that we're current using as a main document to make decisions on for the town.
Could you remind us why we even want to have a delay of twelve months for these buildings? What is supposed to happen during that twelve-month period in the ideal situation?
Well, we just changed it from six months to twelve months, if you recall in the last town meeting. What happens in the twelve months, it really, what that is to do is to, is to make up someone who is thinking of buying a house to demolish it, make him think in advance, is this really worth the time for me to buy and then wait for the twelve months? Because, because it's a historic house. So, it's that consideration. At the same time, if they come with a, with a demolition request, they also have the option to ask for a waiver of that twelve months. So, they might come before us and we might talk to them. We can try to convince them as to there's other options, you know, to rehabilitate the house as a, as a better option. It's just really a cooling off period, that's really what the twelve-month does.
It also allows for the public to say, oh, during that twelve-month period, maybe there's a public group that would be interested in helping prevent that building from being demolished. And this is what happened with historic, with Highfield Hall is because of the bylaw, six months was allowed for people, grassroots organizations to come forward.
If it's significant enough sure.
Right.
If it's a, and there are several very significant houses outside the historic district. I, I did some statistics on it, just so you can see that. So, there are some very significant houses and like I said, a significant house outside a historic district has no oversight. So, really, anything could happen to it, demolition, major alterations or not. So, like I said, the list of significant building currently has over six hundred and fifty listings. From the current survey, we just did a historic inventory survey for the whole town of Falmouth that we're just completing right now. And the consultant that conducted the survey for us recommended two hundred and sixty-eight new Form B. Now, a Form B is a documentation of an important historic house. So, these were houses that before nineteen hundreds hadn't been recognized as significant before and because of this inventory and the consultant, we're now recognizing that there are even more significant houses out there. So, the possibility that we could be adding two hundred and sixty-eight new houses to the list of significant buildings, we think that's gonna make the list unwieldy. So, we'd like to take stuff that shouldn't be on there off before we put new stuff on there. That's the whole purpose of it.
Quick question, Ed.
Sure.
So, there's a, a huge expense that comes along with being considered move, to have your house moved into a significant building status. For example, just keeping, you know, that you can't just do, you know, switch out your windows, you know.
Nope, it's just, it's just demolition.
It's just, it's just a designation.
So, this is just for demolition?
It's just for demolition.
But...
Because these are outside a historic district, so these are all houses outside a historic district. So, there's no guideline oversight for these houses.
And so...
So, this rec, this list is really just a recognition.
And that's not gonna be considered for any other reason?
No.
So, if somebody, I know you're saying no, but I just want, because we get this question. So, if somebody sort of comes into the fold here and they are going to do a renovation project on their home from, I don't know, eighteen-ten, they just go along as if I did on my house from nineteen ninety-four?
They get a building permit, no, no consequences at all.
It's just for the demolition.
Just verifying, thank you.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing they would be subject to is demolition.
Great, okay.
So, just for your own information, from the survey that we just took, pre-nineteen-hundred inventory for the town, there's seven hundred and twenty houses now, pre-nineteen-hundred in Falmouth. And this was, we, we took planning districts for, for the purpose of our survey and this is just a little survey of how they fell within the different districts in the town. Now, the last line for informational, further information of that seven hundred and twenty, we have five houses that are in the sixteen-hundreds, a hundred houses in the seventeen-hundreds. From eighteen hundred to eighteen seventy, two hundred and ninety-three houses and then from eighteen seventy to eighteen ninety-nine, three hundred and twenty-two. So, we have a vast inventory of very historic houses in the town.
And all those are outside the district also?
And a lot of those are outside the district. So, this is the requirements of the person we would be looking for. Obviously, we need a skilled person to do this, we don't want somebody to waste their time and our time. So, we want somebody who is able to look at this and make a reasonably good evaluation to, before they bring it to us. So, we're looking for someone with a degree in architecture or architectural history, historic preservation, or something similar. Computer and research skills, because they're going to be working in the computer quite a bit. A car, because it will require site visits. Many times, they will have to go visit the house if they can't get a good, a good view with the other resources. We just arbitrarily put an estimate on here of a hundred hours at twenty-five dollars per hour for, for a total of twenty-five hundred dollars for the total project. If, if they finish sooner, obviously, it'll be less. If they don't finish it all, then obviously, the, the historical commission will have to pick up the slack for the rest of it. It's just, right now, we, we can't pick up the slack to do the whole thing.
So, our, this is to approve an expenditure, so, Mr. Suso, wouldn't that be an amount as opposed to just approving a high, so we should...
The board could put in a not-to-exceed amount in whatever amount you deem is appropriate.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I got a question. Would you consider like a college student who's not yet got a degree? Because for twenty-five dollars an hour, you're probably not really gonna get a guy with a degree or a girl.
No, it's probably a student, it could be a grad student, it could be a second or third-year student. They, they would already have at least those skills and the recognition and appreciation of what they're looking at.
Right.
Somebody retired.
Any other questions? Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of up to four thousand dollars from the historical commission account for temporary planning intern.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is whether to approve donation funds for the Senior Center stone veneer. Is there anyone here from the Senior Center? Mr. Peter, thank you.
So, the Building Committee is working away the progress on the Senior Center, it's coming along nicely. We remain on budget and on time. Part of the dialogue at the Building Committee's last meeting was this, the stone veneer for the building, which actually was shown on an early concept design and it's something that the Building Committee would like to retain and it's one of the pretty, pretty significant consensus among the staff as well that we would like to have that stone veneer both for aesthetic purposes and durability. It's not a, it's not a must-have and the contingency budget is such that we felt it was really more appropriate to pay for that from town-donated funds. I do want to make a distinction, the Friends of the Council on Aging are doing fundraising to supplement the furniture, fixture, and equipment budget. That is a separate account altogether, that is not this town donation account. So, we have funds on hand for the fifty-nine thousand dollars to pay the added cost of this stone veneer and we have a consensus recommendation from the town manager and the Building Committee to recommend.
I'd move approval of the use of fifty-nine thousand dollars from the donation accounts for the purposes of adding stone veneer to the Senior Center.
I would second that.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, just that if you look at the cement board on the Gus Candy Rec Center, how it's cracking and breaking, we wouldn't wanna, I don't know if this other option is similar, but...
More enduring, maybe.
Yeah, but anyway, the stone veneer is my preferred.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is whether to vote to adopt and execute orders of taking for Winthrop Drive and Captain Davis Lane. Can we do this in just a few minutes?
I think so, I mean, this is, I think, the fourth step in this process when we're done all the other official stuff. This is just a vote to...
This is the last.
So, I move to vote and adopt and execute the orders of taking for Winthrop Drive and Captain Davis Lane.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Special events, can we squeeze those in?
Can we do one or two?
Sure.
I actually have seven forty-two, I think that clocks a little fast.
I bet we can get them all in.
Okay, so, all right, go for it, Doug.
I, you want me to get it, I have it here. Cinco de Mayo, Woods Hole, Quicks Hole, and Landfall on five, five, nineteen.
I do want to point that that is also asking for the closure of Luskam Road, Luskam Ave during that event, but I...
Which we did before.
We did not do it last year, but we did it the year before and there's general approval for that, so I would move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The applicant is here.
Woods Hole, May Festival, Woods Hole Community Association, Taff Playground, and Ballpark, Woods Hole, Saturday, five... Woods Hole May Festival, Woods Hole Community Association, Taff Playground and Ballpark, Woods Hole, Saturday, 5/25/19.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pedal to Parcels, the 300 Committee, a Bike Tour of Conservation Lands in Falmouth, Sunday, 6/29.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Falmouth Art Market, Falmouth Cultural Council, Marina Bar, Park, Banshel Side, Thursdays, 6:13 to 8:29, 2019. Same, same setup that we've had for a few years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we have to move.
Move approval.
Sorry, I, I was talking to him, so we, we lost our rhythm here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Beach Worship Services, John Wesley United Methodist Church, Surf Drive Beach and Parking Lot, Sunday, 6:30 through 9/1/19. Not happening on 7/14 or 8/18.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Autumn Escape Bike Track for the American Lung Association, Ride Through Falmouth, Stop at Surf Drive Beach, Friday, 9/27/2019.
Is there a second?
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
British Beer Company Beer and Oyster Festival, British Beer Company, BBC Seaside Inn, Property Parking Lot, on June 2nd, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I think you should hold off a little once until after our hearings.
Yeah. Do you have a final hearing notice? Yeah, with these double sided pages, it were a little bit, oh, hold on. Uh, here you go. Well, is this for this one here? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the 7:45 public hearing regarding the Flow Neutral Bylaw Evaluation of Request for Variants. Holmes and McGrath, 24 Spencer Baird Road, Woods Hole, Parcel 49A, 06000D, 044, Continued from February 25th, 2019, and March 11th, 2019. This is the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 25th, uh, 2019 at 7:45 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass, on the application of Holmes and McGrath for a water, wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw for a proposed renovation to add three additional bedrooms to an existing single family house at 24 Spencer Baird Road, Woods Hole, in said Falmouth, the parcel number having just been read. Per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication on February 8th, 2019, in the Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome.
Good evening, board. This is Jonathan Poloney for the applicant, Stephen Gellis, trustee and owner of the property located at 24 Spencer Baird and Woods Hole. You have the materials before you. I submitted a packet, I believe, every one of you got. Also, there were two full size copies of the proposed project, the existing conditions and the proposed project, which is basically just, um, opening up the, this attic space. And I think it, actually, if I can make a correction, it's just adding two bedrooms, not three, just two bedrooms are going to be added in the upstairs area.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. My clients are longtime residents of Falmouth and Woods Hole. They have a history that goes back to 1955, when father worked at one of the labs here. They've been summering down here since about that time and they purchased their, this property in 1994. So they've been coming down here in the summer for the last 25 years. Their family has expanded quite a bit, so they have six additional grandchildren now that they would like to have a little extra space for. So that's the reason why, um, they're looking to add these two bedrooms in the upstairs space. When we looked at the bylaw, or rather, when the applicant looked at the bylaw, it appeared that, um, there was a process for requesting a variance. And, uh, so they followed through that process. They did get a letter from the Superintendent of Wastewater, uh, which is included in the packet, dated October 5th, which, uh, stated that there was capacity in the system, additional capacity in the system, uh, for these flows. And then, um, in January, they went before the Board of Health and the Board of Health made a positive determination that a Title V system could be cited on the property. And so those are the two conditions that are contained in the bylaw for granting a variance. I just wanted to point out here, while we're talking about the bylaw, that, um, in the case law that I looked at, it seems to make sense that when you have sewer bylaw that requires people to connect to it, that including variance language in there is important. And I mean, it allows some flexibility for the board. And I think it allows the bylaw itself, that mandatory connection, to withstand scrutiny. So it's an important piece of the bylaw. And I think it, it definitely deserves some careful consideration. And I understand that this is kind of the first request that's coming toward you. So I appreciate the time and the thought that you're putting into this here. So because it appears that we have capacity and that you can construct a Title V system on the property, I think those are two really important limiting factors for limiting how many variances the board's actually going to be confronted with and actually have to, you know, weigh the merits of. I know that in her letter for March 4th, the superintendent indicated that there was a precedent that she was concerned about setting here. And I frankly disagree with her assessment. In her letter, she's referring to the recently sewered line over in the Little Pond Sewer Area. And there are a lot of homes over there, of course. That's the reason why it was important to have the sewer system put in over there in order to take those homes off of the ground infiltration method and have it taken out to the wastewater treatment plant, have it treated there. A lot of those lots, as you may also be aware, are relatively small. They're very small. And so there are a couple of questions I think that come up when you're looking at lots of that size that represent real obstacles that are not faced here. And that the, the variance language of the bylaw specifically addresses. Because it's tied to Title V, actually being able to potentially have a Title V system on there if it weren't for the proximity to the coastal, you know, the reason why you have the sewer there in the first place, you could actually cite a, a system that would serve the units that you're asking for. So I think that, that rational basis is really important. And looking out at the Little Pond Sewer Area, I don't, I, I doubt, I just want to express my doubt that many of those homes would be able to qualify under those standards.
How big a sewer lot again, would you remind me?
10,000 square feet.
Right, thank you.
So with that in mind, um, we think that this proposal meets the requirements of the bylaw. I also welcome any questions that you may have. But in speaking with my client, I think he is, um, right now, there's one low flow toilet installed. There's, of three toilets, one is a low flow toilet. I think he'd definitely be willing, as a condition of the variance, to upgrade the facilities so that they're all low flow facilities, including any showerhead fixtures or faucets. Everything could be low flow so that you're minimizing the amount of flow going through the house as much as possible. It's a seasonal residence that they're just using when they're down here from July, from June to October, so.
All good points. Are there questions?
Are you familiar with the, uh, the guidelines that we have to use for granting a variance? Like the public good and, uh, you know, the, the reasons that are priorities? We're trying to prioritize. The reason is we have limited discharge capacity at the treatment plant. We're looking for more. We know we have a problem that we need to fix.
Right.
But in the interim, we're kind of trying to prioritize. So we've been focusing on Main Street where we know we have redevelopment that's going to happen.
Right.
We've been kind of committed to making sure that we can allow that redevelopment. And when the wastewater superintendent says she's nervous about a precedent, I think it's a legitimate concern, even though I know you've cited that your, your doubts about the Maravista parcel. But there's other parcels in Woods Hole also and other areas of town that are sewered that this could impact. So I just wanted to give you that background of what we're dealing with.
Right, no, I, I certainly, I certainly do appreciate the background. I'm, yeah, I'm well aware of what the town is facing in terms of its projected use. Um, I had a very nice conversation with Virginia Valiela when I was kind of doing my background to try and get myself up to speed with this, so.
Okay.
I kind of understand the horizon that you're on. I just, I do think that there's, um, that, you know, the concerns that you might have over how much are we going to add to this? I think that practically speaking, there probably isn't going to be that much that's going to be added. This project itself with two bedrooms is not going to add a whole lot of flow. I think the reason why she cites the East Falmouth area is because that's where you have the potential for a lot of houses that are currently two or three bedroom houses to add, add rapidly to that capacity. I just don't think that they could actually jump through the hoops that they'd be required to.
Mr. McGrath, did you want to jump in on the specific question?
Yes, I do. The first thing is I, I want to make sure you understand that under Title V, the modified house is considered a four bedroom house. Because Title V defines bedrooms different than what you perceive it to be. And I would refer you to the application we filed with the Board of Health that I filed with you.
The Board of Health did approve.
And the Board of Health did approve it. So in reality, um, the bottom line is under Title V, the modified house is a four bedroom house. It doesn't matter, uh, what the rooms are labeled. Title V says if there's more than, uh, I think it's nine rooms, you divide the number of rooms by two and you round up. So we have four bedrooms. I want to reiterate my previous testimony that, well, um, I describe how I up, my firm operates of a onsite, uh, advanced treatment system serving 60 houses. And there's less than 100 gallons per day on average flow. Title V will, is, you can trace it back to a federal standard in the 50s. So it's the finest 1957 science known to man. The issue is that low flow fixtures are a, a reality. They've been around since 95. And that the reliance on, on peak flows from Title V is not really going to, um, protect you in a way.
Appreciate the practical implication.
You have to look at what the real flow is.
Certainly.
And you have sufficient flow.
Thank you.
Um, I, I want to make a comment in a minute, but I know that, um, Amy Lowell also had her hand to respond to. But I guess I would say that I, I do have, you know, we've heard a lot of concerns about this. Sort of a new element we're hearing about this, um, willingness to accommodate with low flow fixtures. You know, maybe if Amy speaks, you could sort of address that.
Focus the map.
Something a little bit new that we hadn't heard previously. So I'd just like to get her to weigh in on.
Makes a lot of sense. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Amy Lowell. I'm the town's wastewater superintendent. And, um, the history is described correctly here, where I, I did issue a memo, um, in response to a request from the applicant's representative back in October or so of last year, saying there is sufficient capacity for an individual house to make this small expansion. At the, the initial hearing, um, a number of statements were made and then a couple of them were repeated here that, um, made me think I ought to respond because of the bigger context of, of this. This is an individual application. The, um, I, I, um, I believe that the, my previous understanding was that the lot size actually here is, is a little less than 9,000 square feet. Not a, not a huge difference, but I, um, I had, I had gotten a, a lot size that's a little smaller than what was quoted here, which is still bigger than, uh, many of the lots in Maravista, Falmouth Heights, but not by a lot. And my primary concern in, in writing the memo I did in, I think it was in March, was to outline a, um, a couple of things as, as to consider as far as precedent here, but also perhaps more importantly in the, in the future. One is that, um, I, I understand what Mr. McGrath is citing in Title V about there is a, a provision in Title V that allows you to count the number of bedrooms and it's over nine. You can divide it in half and call it blah, 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 blah. To me, that might work for Title V, but it sort of defeats the purpose of the Flow Neutral Bylaw. Because it makes you look at an eight bedroom house as a four bedroom house or, or at most a five bedroom house. And the Flow Neutral Bylaw allows, uh, up to existing houses to expand up to four bedrooms by right. So nothing would come before you in Maravista or Falmouth Heights or anywhere else where an existing property that's two or three bedrooms wants to go up to four. That's, as far as the Flow Neutral Bylaw is concerned, there's no issue there. But if somebody wants to go beyond that, there is a variance requirement. And, um, if, if, uh, that variance were requested on a, on a significant basis in the LPSA area, the Little Pond Sewer Service Area, that would exceed the planning numbers for, the wastewater flow planning numbers for that area.
So let me ask you a question on that. Why is that not, um, able to be taken care of by conditions that the board or findings the board might make in this public hearings? For, so for example, specific findings that, you know, considering the larger lot size? So why would that not take care of your concern?
I guess there are two things. One is that I personally would, would not see this part of Title V as, uh, applicable under the Flow Neutral Bylaw. This, this rounding, this cutting in half the number of bedrooms and, and rounding, I think defeats the purpose of looking at bedrooms as an expansion of flow. So that is my opinion on that for the what's that's, what that's worth. The other thing is I wanted to address something else Mr. McGrath had brought up about, um, average flow and how flow is actually much lower than the Title V numbers. That's absolutely correct on average. But our sewer system has to accommodate peak flows. And peak flow is what the Title V numbers are designed to accommodate. The, the reason the Title V numbers are so much higher than what is actually seen on the properties is, uh, is that Title V is, is, the, the systems are designed to accommodate peak flows. So when you have your party or your guests in town, you don't have a problem with your septic system. And it's the same thing with the sewer system. We have an average annual flow number in our permit, but we have to also be able to accommodate peak flows. So peak flows are relevant. I think, you know, I don't mean to over complicate things, but, but both average and peak should be, excuse me, considered in wastewater planning. So I'm not, this lot is slightly bigger than, than many of the lots in Maravista, Falm, or particularly Maravista. And the Board of Health did make a determination on this particular site that a Title V system could be cited there, uh, to accommodate the flow. I, I felt the need to clarify some of these issues in the memo I wrote to you because I don't want average flow, I don't think it's appropriate for average flows to be used as a way, the way of reviewing Flow Neutral Bylaw requests. And I also, I don't believe in this, I don't believe that the having of bedrooms is helpful to that overall's discussion.
I have a question for the lawyer.
Please.
Just, I, I want to deal with reality. I know that Mr. McGrath talked about reality, but the reality in, this is what you said, is currently the house is a seven bedroom house.
Five.
Right. It's a five bedroom house and the intention is to go to seven bedrooms.
That's correct.
That's the reality.
That's the reality.
It's not what Title V says, but that's the reality of what the homeowner hopes to do. And the Board of Health said that the Title V that could go on the property was for, for bedrooms.
Just a second. The gentleman is waving. Just tell me who you are and we'll figure out.
Homeowner.
Oh, homeowner. Does that make?
Hi, my name's Stephen Gellis and I'm the owner. Honestly, I don't understand the whole thing. That's why I got a lawyer. When we're all there, um, the same number of people will be there this summer. It's just going to make it more comfortable. So I don't see how that quite changes the, the flow, but.
Thank you. Appreciate that. But I think we do need a technical answer to the question. Appreciate that.
The Flow Bylaw says that you determine the flow from Title V. Title V's been the same since 1995.
Okay, but answer his question.
My question is, did the Board of Health approve a Title V system for four bedrooms or seven bedrooms?
They approved a Title V system for the modified house.
Okay, you're not going to answer the question, so then.
Which, uh, which on the plan, the plan submitted shows seven bedrooms.
All right, so the Board of Health have submitted a, that, a title- All right, so the Board of Health have submitted a Title V system for seven bedrooms could go on the property.
Yes.
Not for four, for seven.
We submitted a letter that described how we calculated the design flow.
That's not the question I'm asking. The question I was asking is very clear. Did the Board of Health approve a Title V system for four bedrooms or for seven bedrooms?
Does staff know the answer?
A plan shows seven bedrooms.
Wait, Mike, wait. Don't interrupt. Wait. Does staff know the answer to the question?
I believe it's, the plan submitted was for seven bedrooms.
And that's how.
And getting hung up on how they go about making that determination in the title plan. But the plan is for seven bedrooms. That's what we, the Board of Health.
Great. Okay.
Thank you. That answers the question. Just saving time, Mike. Any other questions from the board?
Megan?
No, I just want to clarify. We're talking about bedrooms and we're not talking about placing any new bathrooms, but the applicant is willing to change the fixtures in the existing bathrooms, correct?
Well, that's correct.
We don't supervise bathrooms.
No, no, I just want to be clear that we're not adding bathrooms to this addition. It's just the additions of the bedrooms.
It could be.
Well, I wouldn't say that that, I shouldn't butt in, but I don't think we can assume that.
Okay, one at a time. Sir, do you have the answer to that question?
I.
It wasn't.
You have to come to the podium when you speak so that folks at home can hear, so please.
There wasn't. The plan had a bathroom mounted to it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just on the practical proposal of low-flow toilets, it's a, you know, it seems to really sort of get at the issue and be a helpful gesture. I don't know how we enforce that, so just for the board to bear that in mind.
You're saying it can't be a condition of.
We don't have.
Even if it was a condition, I mean, are we, you know, are we now going to send a health inspector out to inspect the low-flow toilet?
Or building inspector?
I'd be very happy to make a motion that said we appreciate the offer, we accept the offer. I wouldn't put it in a condition. I don't think we can. But I think if we say, "Thank you for offering, we'd take you up on it," I have every faith that they'll do it.
It's in their best interest with the cost of the running of the water.
Are there any other questions by board members? Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone? Seeing none. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this application? Seeing none?
I move to close the hearing.
Second? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay.
The reason I was pushing this point so hard is that to allow, to protect us in other parts of town that are smaller plots, they're going to need to be able to show that they can put a Title V system that supports the number of bedrooms on that lot. And if this lot is big enough to support a Title V system that supports seven bedrooms, then I have, I don't have as much of a problem with it. I think if it is a Title V system that could only support four bedrooms and we're allowing seven to the sewer system, then I do get concerned about that peak flow that Amy was talking about.
I agree. I mean, I.
Megan?
I think if our findings are sort of specific and point out the particularities of this situation, then I think we, you know, the point is well raised by Amy. And I think it's something that, you know, we, these things are going to continue to come before us. This is a new process and with these conditions that we set to review are not strict guidelines or not things we have to check. It's just stuff we have to consider. I do find this project to be slightly different than some of the other projects that the concern is, you know, in different areas of town.
And I agree. We can, I think we can use conditions to look at, you know, specifics like these are long-term homeowners that have been part of our community and really look at that. We look at a lot of things. As Doug Brown initially pointed out, we have a list of priorities, whether it's affordable housing or, you know, various items that we're looking at, making sure, you know, have the support they need to grow for the community. But I also think on the other side, we need to look at the individuals who are taxpayers here, homeowners here. Any other thoughts? Sam?
No, I have a question that maybe Amy can answer, but will this increase the number of sewer-equivalent units for this property?
Well, we've closed the hearing, but I guess as a point of interest, sure.
Yeah.
I'll calculate it that way.
So, sewer-equivalent units was a Betterment-specific term that applied to Little Pond Sewer Service Area, so it really doesn't affect this.
All right, thank you.
Good answer. Thank you.
I was looking for how the state would account the actual sewer flow from the community and from plan development.
Anyone comfortable in making a motion?
When I first saw this, I was concerned that it was going to be developed to be like short-term rentals. And then I felt immediately like, oh geez, you know, I hope that we don't have a lot of that happening and a lot of these requests. And I didn't ask the applicant if they would be willing to consider excluding short-term rentals. I thought about asking, but I thought that was maybe an unfair question that they might not be prepared for. I like the project and I wish that we had sewer capacity ready to go. And I think that we're on track to find a solution for our problem. I think we have good options at the Water Quality Management Committee meeting. I was very encouraged to learn that the Allen parcel is likely suitable to do our work that we need to do. And we have other options if we need to employ them. So, even though I was initially very hesitant to consider this, I would now, I think I would like to support it because I think it's a reasonable request of a house that was forced to connect to a sewer and has outgrown the size of the house, so.
So, I'd start with the findings that there is capacity at the wastewater treatment plant for this project. That they're, according to the Board of Health, a Title V system could support the seven bedrooms at this property. That the applicant has agreed to put in low-flow toilets and other appliances. And we are happy that they're going to do that. That it does not create a hardship for any of their neighbors. We have not heard any testimony opposing it. And I was concerned also about Mr. Brown's, could we put a condition? But I'm not sure how long a condition you could put like that. That would make sense.
Right.
Well, I think we were pleased to find that the reason for the expansion request is to accommodate family and additional grandkids and all.
I think it's important to put that in there as a finding for the testimony of the property owner.
That's, if you include that.
Sure, yeah. So, with those findings, I would move that we approve the variance for the flow-neutral bylaw.
Can we just add, I'm sorry, just a finding that the lot size is in excess of 9,000 square feet. I know there's some discrepancy about whether it's 10 or just, I think that.
I'm not sure we can give me to.
Correct. I think it is, Amy is correct, is that it is slightly under 9,000 square.
Oh, it's under nine?
It is not under nine.
All right, so strike that.
It gets more and more problematic when these numbers keep changing where it confirmed, affirmed that it is one number and then it gets changed.
I'll second.
So, we'll leave that out. So, there's a motion with findings and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you for the presentation. We now are moving to our eight o'clock hearing. Wetland hearing, Thomas Demetrius, remove licensed float and install a new pile-supported pier and pile-supported boat lift in Yale Pond located at 53 Madeleine Road, East Falmouth, continued from March 25, 2019 to April 22, 2019. The hearing notices as follows. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, which is the wetland regulations and the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, March 25, 2019 at 7:30, continued from February 25, 2019 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall and the application of Thomas Demetrius for permission for the removal of the licensed float and installation of a new pile-supported pier and pile-supported boat lift located at 53 Madeleine Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Body of water affected is Yale Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office per order of the Board of Selectmen. Publication dates Friday, March 8 and Friday, March 15, 2019 in the enterprise. Are there proponents here? Has anybody heard about this?
The idea of the continuance was that they were going to work with the neighbors on coming back with a plan that the neighbors would be happy with.
Is this Mr. Bruselli's?
Yes, it was.
So, what would be the board's pleasure?
Can we table it in case?
Or I guess we can continue it to a specific date.
Want to table it in case he might show up? It is their request to be, the next available hearing.
In May 6.
Okay, so there's a, is there a motion to continue to May 6? Is there a second?
For the request of the applicant.
Time, time seven, at 7:30?
7:30. Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. And next we have right at 8:15, a water rate hearing, continued from March 25, 2019. And the hearing notice on that.
We read it until we started, right?
Pardon?
We read these hearings now. This isn't, this is just a continuance, right?
Right. Okay, so we can skip that. Great. Is Ms. Lowell going to present?
Or Mr. Rafferty is here?
Oh, Mr. Rafferty. I didn't see you back there. Welcome.
There's no change in the original proposal, right?
I have no presentation. It's the same proposal that we put before you before. And I believe you have an example motion that should you be in favor of the rate.
I've not heard from anybody with any opposition to this, so I'm prepared to go ahead and make the motion as it's listed, but it'll take a little while.
Go for it.
Because I think I have to read the entire thing.
I just want to second that, that, you know, even though we talked about this and we had a little bit of a conversation around this topic at town meeting, that I haven't received anything to date beyond what we heard from some individuals at town meeting about this.
The one question I have as to whether the water rate structure is, it's for three years. Do we actually do them all this, at this time? Or do we do them one this year, one next year, and one the year after?
Depends on how you would like to spend your time over the next couple of years. This is really a suggestion to ease in, to get from where we're at now to where we need to be over three years. I think over the next couple of years of operating the system, we'll have a good handle on what the projected cost might be.
One reason to do them all right now is so that everyone knows what's happening.
Right.
A reason to only do one year is, does that tie our hands in a way that we are then wished we hadn't done that?
And I would defer to somebody else about parliamentary procedure. I would think you could always do it.
We would encourage you to do all three years now.
Okay.
The board is so inclined.
This would be effective Monday, June 3, 2019. The water rate structure shall be as follows. From June 3, 2019 to May 31, 2020. For a meter size 5/8 inch, a semi-annual billing of $59. 3/4 inch, $71. 1 inch, $113. For 1 1/2 inch, quarterly annual billing of $99. 2 inches, $142. 3 inches, $235. 4 inches, $282.50. 6 inches, $425. And 8 inches, $562.50. And the excess rate would go up to $3.37 per HCF. All of that comes out to about 2% increases each of those steps, but I don't think the steps needed to be added as part of the motion.
We do not.
Is there a second?
Well, now, that's, that's the first third.
I'm sorry. Jumped in the gun.
From June 1, 2020 to May 30, 2021. For 5/8 inch, it would go up to $60. 3/4 inch, $73. And 1 inch, $115 for the semi-annual. For quarterly annual, 1 1/2 inch would be $101. 2 inch would be $144.50. 3 inches, $239.50. 4 inches would be $288. 6 inch, $433. And 8 inch, $575, with the excess rate going up to $3.43. From May 31 to 2021 to June 6, 2022. 5/8 would go up to $62 on semi-annual billing. 3/4 inch would go $74 and 1 inch, $118. Why, for the quarterly annual billing, 1 1/2 inch would go $103. 2 inch, $147.50. 3 inch, $244. 3 inch, 4 inch, $294. 6 inch, $441.50. And 8 inch, $589, with the excess rate going up to $3.50 per HCF.
Second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the second piece of that, it would be to move that we do have no increase on the sewer rate.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I thank you on behalf of Amy.
Grant has a question.
Okay. There's nothing before the board right now, so. Okay, 8:15, 8:20. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an application for transfer of a wine and malt liquor license, common victual license and automatic amusement license for New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papagenos, 56 Davis Straits, Falmouth. Is he, oh, welcome. Hi. Please introduce yourself.
Christine Kucha, General Manager of Papagenos.
So, I'm going to read the liquor license hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papagenos, has applied for a transfer of ownership of a wine and malt restaurant license located at 56 Davis Straits, Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, April 22, 2019 at 8:20 PM on the above application. Publication date, April 5, 2019. Can you tell us a little bit what you're asking for?
Just a changeover of the beer and wine license.
Okay. And we have.
This is not change of manager. This is just ownership of the license?
Correct. And change of general manager.
And we have a report from the police that there is no issue with the transfer request. Are there any questions from the board? We also have a report from the fire department that there are no issues with the transfer request.
And will we close the hearing?
Okay, is, no, okay, a second?
Do you want, see if there's any.
Oh, I'm going to take public testimony. I'm sorry.
But we can move to, is there anyone here wants to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who wants to speak against this request? Seeing none?
And will we close the hearing?
Second? All those in favor?
I guess I still, I guess I am questioning about whether this is, the application is just for a transfer of license, not change of manager. And.
Right.
I just, I'm, so you're not currently the manager?
I am currently the manager.
Okay, so it's not changing the manager. Great.
Okay. Good clarification. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're all set. We also have at 8:20, an application for a transfer of wine and malt package store license for Wild Harbor General Store, Inc., doing business as Wild Harbor General Store, 200 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. Is the proponent here? Hi, welcome. I'm going to read the hearing notice, which is a liquor license hearing notice given under Chapter 138 of general laws as amended that Wild Harbor General Store, Inc., doing business as Wild Harbor General Store, has applied for a transfer of ownership of a wine and malt package store license located at 198 to 200 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. Hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, April 22, 2019 at 8:20 PM. And this was published on March 29, 2019. Hi, please introduce yourself.
I'm Caroline Gabriel.
Welcome.
Hello.
And so, this is an application for a transfer. The police department has said there is no issue for the transfer. No disqualification.
And are you currently the manager or are you going to be a new manager?
I'm the new owner, manager of the establishment.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Ollie, no problem.
Ollie could practice as well.
Are there any questions by members of the board?
I don't have any questions. I just commented that I was happy to see the store being run pretty much as it was previously and even keeping the breakfast sandwiches in the same spot, so.
I'm all for it.
That's a plus. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this application?
I just have a few questions.
Sure, go for it.
Every time we have a new manager of a liquor license, I would just like to remind you that any violation of sale of alcohol to someone underage is your responsibility, whether you are there or not. And that we hope that you're going to have all your staff tips trained about selling alcohol. Often in these general stores, it becomes a little bit, that it's not a package store. It's just something that you need to be very particularly aware of. Okay?
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I move to close the hearing. And move, we close the hearing?
Second?
All those.
We did call for public.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And is there a motion?
I move approval.
And a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations on the purchase and good luck. Twenty, the next item on the agenda is, let's see, let's go back for the last licenses, the Walk for Hope, if you would?
New recommended, Walk for Hope Housing Assistance Corporation, Village Green Start, Finish, Walk on Sidewalks, Sunday, June second, two thousand nineteen.
Move approval?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I do have someone here if you wanted to know more information.
Falmouth Kids Day of Play, Falmouth Rotary Club, Mullen Hall School, Saturday, six, eight, two thousand nineteen.
Move approval?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. British Beer Company, Road Race Beer Garden, British Beer Company, BBC Seaside Inn, property parking lot, Sunday, eight, eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
That's the road race Sunday, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, it is. Are there any questions on that?
It was a road race Saturday, right?
Saturday.
No, Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday.
Eighteenth Sunday, it is Sunday, yep. Question on that? No, okay, great. It says, I move approval?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Wings for Falmouth Families Carnival, Wings for Falmouth Families, Marina Park, Tuesday, eight twenty, two thousand nineteen.
Eight twenty, all right. Okay, move, uh, move approval?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Beach Wedding Ceremony in Sognah, Falmouth Heights Beach, Saturday, eight three, two thousand nineteen.
And move approval?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Another beach wedding ceremony, Curran, the Curran Wedding, Surf Drive Beach, Saturday, eight ten, two thousand nineteen.
And move approval?
Sure, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Great. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move ahead to the business calendar, which is gonna start with Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, institution, rather, update, Colin Reed and Mark Abbott. Welcome, gentlemen. Looking forward to this, thanks.
Thank you, thank you for having us. You need to get a.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nope, sorry, that's. Well, thank you very much, just, this is an update, just to sort of demystify the institution. We're the largest nonprofit organization in the known universe, dedicated to looking at ocean research, exploration, and education. A lot of people think we're a federal agency, even because we get eighty percent of our funding from the federal government, but we're a nonprofit. Some think, people think we're an educational institution, because we have a dot edu in our domain name. We do run a graduate program with a little institution up in Cambridge called MIT. But we're really a nonprofit standalone entity with revenue that's a little over two hundred million a year. That comes into our scientists and engineers, who write their own grant proposals every year to various federal agencies, and nonprofit foundations primarily. But, so they're all independent entrepreneurs. We are the second-largest employer on Cape Cod, over a thousand employees. Most of our employees live in the area, and they generate other jobs because of their grants, they're buying stuff, they're subcontracting out to get work done, et cetera. We do have a fair physical footprint, two hundred acres, fifty-eight buildings, things offshore, you've seen our ships. The Armstrong, I think is still in port, it was in yesterday, but she'll be sailing soon off to the North Atlantic. The Atlantis is our other big ship, and she's in the Pacific right now, carrying Alvin. And then we have a small coastal research vessel, Tioga, that goes on and off, and you, in the local waters here. But we're also well-known, not only for ships, but for underwater robots and vehicles. Over sixty-four thousand miles every year is traversed by our scientists and other scientists from around the world, primarily in the US, who use our ships to conduct their research.
Thank you, Mark. Please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mark Abbott, president and director of Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, my apologies. These are our two campuses, started down in the village, on the waterfront, up in the area, then up behind there, up on the hill. And then about forty years ago, purchased the Quisic campus, so we have two campuses. We like to say five districts, but it's one of the few ocean research institutions in the country that's actually right on the ocean with its ships. Many of them are removed from where they are, and it's really at the heart and soul of who we are and what we do. Here's some pictures of it, you've all seen the village campus surrounded by Marine Biological Lab and NOAA, and then the Quisic campus up there in the upper left, which was started roughly forty years ago and expanded. And that's kind of an area where we see future growth largely taking place, the village is full. And then also, we're, we have to worry about things like sea level rise and severe storms, so it's likely that we will look to expand our footprint away from down in the village, and think how we're going to do that. We certainly play an important role in the economy of the area because of the activity of our faculty, or of our scientists, engineers, and students. So that's where the money comes in, roughly a hun, as I said, a little over a hundred and fifty million, another fifty million from private foundations. That gets spread across a lot of companies in the region. We are a leader in ocean robotics. If you look at the map of the robotics industry in the ocean, the epicenter is really in southeast Massachusetts. A lot up in the Boston-Cambridge area, stretching over to Providence, and Woods Hole's really at the center of that industry. And it's likely that that's going to be an industry that will expand over time. We've spun off a lot of HOE-related companies, Teledyne Web, Hydroid. Many companies up in the area have spun off from the research and engineering that takes place at Woods Hole Oceanographic. And it's really a part of what we call the blue economy. It's certainly an area that we initially think of the jobs and economic activity related to the ocean, be it tourism, or fishing, or technology. But looking to the future, we really are the ocean planet, and we're trying to really lead what's the relationship between people and the ocean, so that we're good stewards of this invaluable resource. So it goes beyond just simply jobs or economic activity. How do we make it sustainable, and how do we continue to improve our understanding to be good stewards of this ocean world? But we also recognize that we live in a community, we sponsor a lot of activities on our facilities, educational programs, do the best we can to support local nonprofit activities, provide spaces indoors and outdoors, and even down to helping support some of the emergency support services for some of the offshore communities. So we really try to be a good neighbor, and we all live here in this area. And down in the bottom of that list are the range of things, ranging from the Woods Hole Film Festival, to looking at the Falmouth Water Stewards, to the Woods Hole Historical Museum, and many more, where we really work to be a good neighbor for the community. But I think the challenge for us, and it's something that we really, we work with every day, those grants are all competitive. Our people are writing on the order of five to six proposals, basically business plans, every year to get funding. We are a soft-money institution, there's no appropriation from the federal government. We do have an endowment, but it doesn't come anywhere near supporting all of the research activity. And we all look at the federal government's budget, really doesn't matter who's in the White House. It's becoming more and more challenging to support the levels of research that we need to keep this enterprise working. So we look at other sources of funding, be it philanthropy or nonprofit foundations, but we're beginning to examine, looking at new relationships and new partnerships, and keeping our facilities updated. It's a, we're in good financial shape, but it requires a lot of activity day by day to keep these men and women working hard to improve our understanding of the ocean. It's not something where there's a lot of extra money to spare. But just to give you a little bit of example of some of the things we're working on, that many of you are aware of, and may, or some may not. Plastics are obviously a big issue. That's something that I would say in the last five years is something that's really come to the fore. Our scientists are working with the private sector and with nonprofits, as well with the federal government, to understand what's, what are the fates of plastics, and can we think about new ways to create plastic materials so that they don't harm marine life as well as life on the land? So this is a really huge issue, there isn't really even a standard for how you measure plastic. And the more we look, the more we find we don't understand. So this is an area that we think will be an area of enormous future potential. The second one is over on the right, I like to say it's Jim Cameron meets Dr. Seuss. These are the kind of alien organisms that we find in what we call the twilight zone. It's the area of the ocean ranging from about six hundred to three thousand feet deep. It's enough, enough light so you know whether it's light or dark, but you don't really, there's not enough light for plant life to take place. It is the scene of the largest daily migration on the planet. Every night, a large fraction of the animals and other organisms that live there migrate up to the surface to feed, and then descend when the sun comes up to avoid predation. And every day around the globe, that area is migrating. It plays a role in the cycling of carbon on the planet, and it's an area that's already being viewed for possible exploitation. I.e., go out and harvest the biomass that lives in that region to create food stock for aquaculture, or even all the way to agriculture on land. And yet, we know hardly anything about it. So our scientists are trying to bring that wonder and excitement, as well as the importance of studying this region, to the whole world. This was actually a program funded by private philanthropy, not necessarily by the federal government. And then the last one there in the lower-left corner is actually something that people don't think about, but there are planetary bodies in the solar system, moons around Jupiter and Saturn, that are thought to have more water than Earth. And many of these have hydrothermal vents at the bottom, they're covered with ice. And NASA's developing missions to go and explore these other worlds to seek for life. And we actually have a partnership with Jet Propulsion Lab out in Pasadena, California, because they wanna send a robotic mission, penetrate that ice, and then seek life. Why do they come to Woods Hole? Because, one, we know how to build underwater robots, and, two, we know how to study and find signs of life around these hydrothermal vents. So it's a pretty exciting area, it's a great time to be a scientist, and it's always a challenge. And I think one of the things that we see here is we, looking through the records, we think it's been about twenty years since HOE's come and briefed the Board of Selectmen. We think that should happen maybe a little more often, but we think that there are a lot of areas of common interest. We certainly worry about our financial stability, but we want to provide a, enable a strong local economy, as well as environmental stewardship. Partnering with the town of Falmouth on our Seaport Economic Council grant is a real step in the right direction. Thinking about how we keep these facilities moving forward, so we can have that leading-edge scientists. Thinking about conservation alternatives via off-site conservation, perhaps on the Quisic campus. Looking at how we reduce our footprint, solar power and water use, sort of an energy master plan. These are areas where we look at stronger partnerships with the town, and making it a better, making us better stewards of the environment. Other areas show up as well, so we have a lot of students who come down from MIT every year, as well as young scientists and engineers. Affordable housing is a big issue for us. We're finding it harder and harder to recruit the best and the brightest, because it's, they have to go across the canal, or whatever, and it's hard for them to make, to make that decision to come and live here. Diversity is something that we see as a real challenge. A lot of students come here and find that this is a challenging area in terms of that. And we wanna partner again with the town and other entities to put forward, to work on that issue. And in fact, we even look at the opioid crisis as another one that's touched home with our institution, touched our families, and we wanna again partner with the town and other entities to see how can we make, address that important problem. So we really see that, you know, we've been around for almost a century. We're dedicated to understanding the ocean, doing research, exploration, and education. We wanna apply that knowledge, help society become better stewards, and thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I think, appreciate that, Mark, and, and I think this is a good time, you know, every twenty years, we should also say how much we appreciate the, you know, the, how HOE makes Falmouth, it's one of the things that makes Falmouth very special. I mean, it certainly is an attraction for folks who visit here, to just wanna, you know, come and take a look at, you know, what, what kind of interesting advancements you're looking at, jobs, and, and that, I wanna also remark on the existing partnerships with the town. Some of HOE folks are on some of our important volunteer committees, coastal resiliency comes to mind, water quality comes to mind. And, you know, we, you know, you're our neighbors, and so, you know, I know I, I have tapped, you know, my neighbors in terms of just really partnering with the town and, and helping us with your expertise to, to, you know, work with our, with our expertise, and we look forward to more of that going forward. It's very, you know, I think it's crucial for Falmouth's, you know, long-term community spirit and, and the identity of the town. Are there any questions, Doug?
I have one question, I understood your challenge about, you know, finding affordable housing for your people. What was the next one with the diversity, I didn't really get that.
Well, we're seeing, provide, if you look at ocean sciences, it tends to be, we're pretty good on the gender diversity, but on ethnic diversity, it tends to be pretty low, mostly white.
So it's a goal for you?
And it's a goal for us, because we're attracting more and more students and employees who come from more diverse backgrounds, and that's an issue in Falmouth, that's something, you know, the whole Cape Cod region, it's something that I think all of us have to figure, where are we good, and how can we actually make, do some things that make it a better place, and a more welcoming place?
And benefit from that diversity?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to that point, you know, it's, it's a conversation that we've been having as a town, the affirmative action committee, we were just talking about sort of this exact thing, I guess it was last week. Just really about how, you know, we, sort of how do we identify as a community? How do we make the community welcoming to individuals who either come sort of on a temporary basis, or are looking to relocate? So I think there's a lot of opportunity to, to continue that discussion, because a lot of the diversity that we have in our town, sort of on a seasonal basis, comes from the influx of students, and individuals who come in the summer to be at HOE, or MBL, or other institutions there, and so, you know, some of those folks, as they're finishing up their, their studies, are looking to find a place to locate, and this is, you know, this is a place that we wanna have the opening, open and welcoming. So I hope, hopefully we can have those further conversations, because the town is talking about that as well.
Doug, and then Sam?
I really appreciate all these things you've said, but walking down School Street two days ago, boy, is that, that parking lot is just a disaster. It's so sad, to have all that pavement where there were trees and bushes. For someone, a community that is so interested in science. For someone, a community that is so interested in science, so interested in the environment to have done that is very disappointing.
It wasn't an easy thing. We did work. We made a lot of compromises with the community. In fact, they did have a plan that we actually modified to actually have more landscaping around there, more sort of natural handling of stormwater and drainage. Those are easy answers.
Scary that what you actually tried to do, what I see right now, and if that's the good bit, wow, then the original plan must have really.
No, there were, there were, we listened a lot to the community.
It's really scary to think that you just said, oh, this is aft, only after we got pushed by the community really hard, did we end up with this plan. Then, I really am fearful of what you guys wanted to do, that the community had to say, wait, back off a little bit. So, I just, I had, I just walked it two days ago and knew it was coming, but it was, it was very, very heartbreaking.
Sam?
I just want to say, we, we just had a proclamation for Arts Week. One of the things that I've noticed is that your staff, through your fam, the families of the staff or through the staff members themselves, bring an awful lot of artistic talent into this community. The, the culture that we enjoy here in Falmouth is certainly reinforced by the kind of talents that your staff brings to this community. So, I've noticed that through our, through my entire tenure here, citizenship here in Falmouth. So, I really appreciate the cultural contribution that the members of your staff bring to this town.
Okay, thank you.
I was very interested to see the super, Lori Dour's superintendent's message about the success of the science fair at the Falmouth schools. And, you know, I think that the Oceanographic Institution probably contributes a lot to that as well.
Oh, there's a, there's a lot they do that I don't know.
Right?
A thousand of them out there.
Yeah.
They're busy.
Madam Chair, could I add?
Please.
About one item. I know CEO Mark Abbott mentioned the Seaport Economic Council, the collaborative work that we're doing along with HUI Vice President Rob Munir, who also serves on the, very distinctively on one of our commissions. We, the town and HUI recently received, as the board's aware, a million dollar grant from the Seaport Economic Council in furtherance of the extraordinary planning, really cutting-edge planning going on, on the, I believe it's pronounced Island, Mark?
Island. Island close.
Island Doc, thank you. That is particularly designed to accommodate in a cutting-edge way the anticipated sea level rise. And they are doing some extraordinary work there. So, this is a partnership that's going to continue, and it happens to apply at this present time to that important project. But I think it's just an indication of the, you know, of the, the record of collaboration we've had with, with HUI, and we look forward to that continuing.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll look forward to them more often.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have some interviews, and I just want to let folks know that we're trying to do interviews a little bit earlier in the agenda because we appreciate folks who step up and, and want to volunteer for our committees. The first one is Cable Advisory. We have three applicants. Robert Mascali, do you want to come up first? There are three vacancies. One term is until June 30, 2019, then next two are until June 30, 2021.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members. I am Robert Mascali, 38, Oxbow Road, T-Ticket, Mass. And I am here applying for the Cable TV Advisory Board position, or one of them.
And what makes you interested in that committee?
I don't profess to have any true experience in the cable TV world. I am, like many of us, a watcher of, of cable TV. We've lived here in Falmouth. We've been a property owner for seven years. We moved here full-time three years ago. And the way I learned a lot about the town was watching cable TV, the few times that, that we were here and, and visiting, or the many times, I should say, we were here and visiting. I'm currently a member of the Commission on Disabilities here in town, but they meet on Thursdays in the afternoon, and it's, has started to butt up against my, my schedule. So, unfortunately, I'm going to resign that position, and I was looking for an open position that, that I could volunteer for. I did some investigating, spoke to some people, and realized there was an opening on this position with a, some important things coming down the pike, specifically the negotiation and implementation of a renewal license, the current license expiring at June, October 2021, I believe. So, I felt that my experience as a practicing attorney for 40 years in the private sector and the public sector and also in the nonprofit sector would, would, would be in good stead for, for this position. So, that's why I, why I applied.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone have any questions?
No. I appreciate you staying, being willing to continue to, to volunteer work. That's great.
Thank you. We'll take, oh, question here.
Questionable references, Patterson, Brock.
Yeah, never a good idea.
But before I leave, I do, as, as current president of the Rotary Club of Falmouth, I want to specifically thank you for approving our inaugural day of play that's, that's coming up in.
Sounds like a good idea.
On June 8th. And we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for that pitch. Okay, well, we'll move to the next applicant, which would be Diane Jamot, if I'm saying Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, how are you? Good evening. My name is Diane Jamot. I live on Jones Road in Falmouth, grew up in Falmouth, sort of left to go to college and have a career, and have retired back to Falmouth.
Welcome back.
And have taken my time to get engaged in anything and sort of looking around on how I could perhaps help on some issues in town. And I learned about the need of the Cable Commission. And I thought I would submit my application. It's an area where I've done some work, and I thought maybe I could bring some value to the town and to the commission members.
And give us just a, a line or two about your specialties in your work.
My spe, I made my living as a government relations professional, mostly, which means I was a lobbyist. I lived in Washington DC and Virginia for most of my professional career. However, early in my career, I worked for a county, and in that, in that capacity, I ran the Office of Citizen and Consumer Affairs. So, that position, we took complaints against county services and county businesses. As an aside to that, because I was very good at solving pop, problems, you know, big policy sort of kind of problems for the, for the county, I got engaged with my Board of Supervisors in working with the cable operator who was having some significant problems. They were laying some plant that was causing tremendous outages. Their customer service was horrible. People were threatening to come down and, you know, boycott the county board if things didn't improve. And they asked me to get engaged to do some examination of how things could be improved, how we could help the cable operator be a better service provider to the people of the county, and how we could help the people of the county understand that there was going to be a little pain while this, you know, new plant was going in. However, there should have been responsiveness and respectful responses from the operator as this was taking place. So, I got involved in the recertification process of the cable operator, along the lines of what's getting ready to happen here in 2021.
Does sound timely.
Yes. And so, when I learned about the, the need of the commission not having enough members to really even meet and to look at this, to look at the cable function as, you know, being very important to this town and the fact that you have chosen Falmouth Community Television to operate your public access television, there is a, a, an important issue getting ready to take place here that is going to require, I think, some, some good conversation and some deep thought on how we proceed, particularly with the FCC moving forward with some crazy kind of possible rulemaking changes that would impact the town significantly and our ability to have a great public access television, so.
Very, very good points. Any questions?
You answered my question.
Doug?
Sounds like you're going to be a good negotiator when it comes to talking to the cable company. I wish we could have some more realistic, lower-cost options for people in Falmouth. When you want to reduce your bill, it's always a question of, do you want the high-definition TV, or do you want to go to the old blurry analog picture, and then you can save a few bucks? So, I wish there was something in the middle, so.
Yeah.
Well, HD is negotiable too, and there are certain aspects to that. So, I'm sure when the contract negotiations start, that'll be among the concerns.
Good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next candidate is Mr. Jay Zavala, who I did, ah, ah, ah. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm struggling with the cold, so I reduced my thoughts to writing. I think what I have to offer in writing are, will answer most of your questions. I have a copy for you and a copy for.
That would be great.
And for the chair.
Please. Thank you very much. Also, the fact that Mr. Zavala is pretty well-known by the board, I think that'll, if you want to pass some of those down.
And that he's had a lot of experience with this particular subject matter, so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zavala?
Yep. Very familiar with Mr. Zavala and his qualifications.
And his work with FCTV, his extensive work with FCTV.
Absolutely.
Among other, many other things.
Not to mention the chamber.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Thank you. So, your reputation precedes you. We'll, we'll move along here. Thank you. Is, is there feeling of the board with respect to these three terms?
I guess I would just, I guess I would just go in the order that we, I mean, we just assign in the order that we heard individuals. So, for.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say for.
I'm fine with that.
Term ending 6/30/2019 for Robert Mascali. It allows him to get, have some time to step away from his other engagement with the Commission on Disabilities. And then, for a term ending 6/30/2021, Ms. Jamot. And for a term ending 6/30/2021, Mr. Zavala.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate it.
And Mr. Mascali, it just does mean that you'll have to come back in June and answer the questions again.
Thank you all. The next committee is Energy Committee. Matt Patrick is here to interview, or, actually, I did not see Matt. Maybe we'll hold that and reschedule if, if that didn't get confirmed, or maybe a little bit.
It's not mandatory, so we don't have to actually interview him.
Right.
Well, in that case.
I believe Mr. Patrick was the chair of the Energy Committee previously.
Yeah, he certainly is.
Right.
That's a very good point, then.
Long history.
I have no problem appointing Mr. Patrick to the Energy Committee. I'm just looking for the.
Here it is. Is that it?
Yep, to a term ending June 30, 2020. There are two vacancies, so if someone else wants to compete with them, they can actually apply for their own vacancy.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The next is Human Services Committee. Dr. Langer? Ah, welcome. And I am looking for the term on this one.
There are two terms. There's one ending 6/30/2019 and one ending 6/30/2020.
Great. Please tell us about yourself. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Larry Langer. I've been a psychologist for over 40 years. I, I can go back and cover some of my resume if you'd like. I received my doctorate in 1975 from Michigan State, and I've been in Massachusetts since 1975, been in Massachusetts since '78. I mostly lived up in the Worcester area and have been a property owner here for about 20 years. Over the past three and a half years, we've been residents of Falmouth and moved our residents from Worcester to Falmouth. I've worked in and been a part of many different mental health facilities, both in Pennsylvania as well as in Massachusetts. These included heading up an inpatient service, day treatment, outpatient services, an outreach program for HIV. Later on, I was a assistant professor in, at the University of Mass Medical School, both in psychiatry and family and community medicine. I taught residents how to interview patients in family medicine. We would go into the, into their exam rooms, and of course, when there was a physical exam, I would leave. And then later on, staff the cases to help the residents to better understand mental health issues and general interviewing techniques. I was also in a private practice for many years. Over the last 17, I'm sorry, 14 years, I was a consultant to the Disability Determination Services, which receives its funds from Social Security. And we make determinations about people's level of disability and whether they are able to receive funding from the Social Security Administration. And recently, I've retired and wanted to do some things in the town here. I've read over the report, at least the, the summary of the report from the Human Services Committee. I'm aware of the ver, the four different areas that are deemed to be essential, those being housing, outplacement of, people leaving the area, which you folks want to make sure that doesn't happen, mental health services, and substance abuse. I've sat in on a couple of meetings of the Human Service Committee and feel like I really have a lot I could offer in terms of my background and experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
No, I think you've answered them all. I'm very glad you've decided to come aboard for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just nice to see, just that you've touched on, just professionally, a lot of the areas that Human Services really tries to focus on. So, I think it'll be a, a great addition to that committee.
We'd love to reappoint Lawrence Langer to a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is interview vote and appoint for zoning Board of Appeals. We already did interview Mr. Patamus. We next have James Morse. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good evening. You could please introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this committee?
Certainly. My name is James Morse. I live at 545 West Falmouth Highway. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 6. I threw an application in after an appeal was made to town meeting members that they were looking for either a full-time or a alternate on the ZBA. I'm an attorney, practicing law here in town. My office is over in the Homeport. My practice does not do a lot of zoning or real estate conveyancing. It focuses on criminal defense, wills, estates, and trusts, probate administration, and business litigation representation. Because of that, I said, well, okay, this is an administrative body I could sit for without possibly a lot of conflict. I've been practicing here in Falmouth now, full-time for about six months. I had been an attorney for 12 years. I was a police officer over on Martha's Vineyard for approximately 20 years before that. Basically, I'm just looking for an additional way to serve the town of Falmouth.
Appreciate that. And I know it's been mentioned to you that there, there've been some community concerns raised about an incident in Oak Bluffs, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that.
Certainly. Without getting into the specifics, it was covered in the paper, I made a professional mistake in my life, and it cost me a career with the police department. The termination reasons, however, I merely point to the board, did not involve dishonesty. They did not involve moral turpitude. I was disciplined for violating department rules and regulations. The fact that it didn't involve dishonesty is, was certified to the Retirement Board of Dukes County and is why I still have a active law license and have not been sanctioned by the Board of Bar Office ears.
Thank you.
I would barely say that every Monday morning in District Court, as a criminal defense attorney, there are decent, good people who make mistakes. I'm just trying to move past mine.
Thank you for that. Are there questions by members of the board?
We have two positions, right? Alternate and a full-time. And would you say that you would be learning as we go? Because.
I'm. I'm fairly familiar with the purview of the ZBA in terms of comprehensive permits, appeals, general permitting. I know the ins and outs, the nuances of forty B, when it's used both as a sword and a shield, so to speak. I'll defer to whatever the board feels more comfortable pointing me to, or if appointing at all.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
No, I couldn't remember. Did you say had you been to any of their meetings yet?
I have not been in the last several months. I think the last time I was actually physically present was about a year ago. I do watch them on TV. I read the, the press coverage of them. I was a little more active when Suri Budro was the zoning administrator. I've known her for years.
Okay, great. Thank you.
My question isn't for Mr. Morse as much as, so right now, we have a full-member vacancy and associate-member vacancy. And we have one associate who's applying for the full member. So if we appoint our current associate, we would then have another associate-member vacancy that we'd have to fill, right?
And that's why I was asking Mr. Morse if he would feel like he would be in a bit of a learning role, because we have a person who's already been serving that.
Aye.
I would feel that that person should be.
But that person would have to resign from being associate member, and we would then have another position to fill.
Well, but he's asked to be a full-time.
He's applied for the full-time, right?
Right. So why wouldn't we?
I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah.
After tonight, we're still going to, if we appoint both these people, we're still going to have a vacancy.
Right.
Right. Oh, there's two alternate vacancies?
There must be, because Jerry right now has one. And it's listed that we have a vacancy.
I believe it was the one that. I'm forgetting his name. No, but it'll come to you. But anyway, he was, he just, he had been an alternate, and Steve Patton. And then he became, he came, became a full-time member. So that position is open.
Any more questions?
No, I think.
Sam?
I would move that we appoint Jerry Patamas to a term ending in, as a full member, June thirtieth of twenty twenty, and Mr. Morse to a term as associate member ending June thirtieth.
Could you make the, separate the motions?
Sure. All right, then the first motion would be to appoint Jerry Patamas to a full-member position for a term ending in June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I move that we appoint, I'm sorry, Larry Langer?
James Morse.
James Morse, I'm sorry.
It's the double-sided, it's the paper-saving mechanisms, which are really important to make it hard to read.
And I'm happy to take his PhD.
To appoint James Morse to the associate-member position of the ZBA for a term ending in June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Four, one.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have an aquaculture plan presentation. Mr. Martinson, welcome.
Thank you for, for your time this evening. I know you have a really busy agenda, and I will work as quick as I can to get through this so that you can move on to other matters. However, we are here to talk about a very important project that we have been working on, and we being the town of Falmouth, the town manager's office, and now the, not so far recently, but appointed within the last year, a year and a half, Shellfish Advisory Committee, which is representative of both our commercial industry, recreational fishermen, water quality management committee, private diggers, and I know I'm forgetting a few others on there. But over half the committees here with us this evening, they've had tremendous involvement, helping us really tackle some of the things that we've been looking at and really adding a lot of value to our decisions by really kind of enlightening us and bringing us up to speed on a lot of the things we're, we're kind of tackling right now as a community, particularly on how we can move forward with aquaculture. So what, the whole reason why we're here this evening is, and were it not for nitrogen, we probably would not be having this discussion. We really wouldn't probably be looking at even, probably doing farming within our estuaries.
Necessity is the mother of invention.
It sure is.
Is that what we're saying?
And the mother of farms also, hopefully. So, so were it not for nitrogen, we would not be here tonight. So one of our goals is to, and our primary goal is, you know, as a group, is to address nitrogen. Although there are individuals out here who have their own interests that might, you know, precede some of that, at the end of the day, we're all interested in water quality and maintaining our estuaries so that all of us can use the resource. We're also looking to create a community benefit. And that comes in a few different ways, which I'll get into in a few minutes here. And we're looking to do that particularly in our most impacted estuaries. And we'll talk a little bit about the TMDLs and kind of how we're going to get there. And the last is to facilitate an opportunity for local aquaculture farmers. And we're hoping to do that by selecting and managing aquaculture sites to avoid negative impacts on other users of the, of the resource, and also to increase population at the same time for our commercial and recreational harvesters. Just as a quick kind of review, I know some folks have seen these photos, but I think what's important here is, is the town of Falmouth, if not one of the leaders, we are the leader in developing alternative solutions using aquaculture. We've, we work with a number of different organizations. I just, I, I think it's worth mentioning this group because it's vast and huge, and the amount of time that they donate to this town really somewhat has been understated up to this point. We work with the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, the Falmouth Shellfish Volunteer Corps, Barnstable County Sheriff's Inmates. We also work with Quincy College Aquaculture Students. We work with Upper Cape Tech, Falmouth Newcomers Group, Stonehill College, Harvard University, SMass, numerous church and other organizations, numerous churches and other organizations. We're at roughly on all these projects that you're looking here, we're somewhere around twelve thousand hours of volunteer time that's gone into that. So what's really neat about that is that everyone that's involved with that, everyone that comes there becomes a spokesperson for what's going on, and they become educated about it. Just kind of going around real quick here, this is the first, top left represents the work that we did with the EPA grant establishing a former reef up in that area. Move over to the right, this is Little Pond Farm, when we did three point two million oysters. It's a two, two-acre deployment. Further over from there, it's last year when we did cohogs, oysters, and scallops in Little Pond. To think that we're actually growing scallops in Little Pond, I mean, scallops are your canaries. Have you ever heard me say that before? They're what dies when things are bad. That kind of shows you how things are turned around in there, that we're actually able to raise canaries in this former coal mine. If you look at Wacoit Bay, this is the project that we've done. This is a half a million dollar grant that we received through the National Estuaries Program. We're doing this with Hui, Webner, and Stonehill, and this is addressing not only the shellfish and how they denitrify, but what happens underneath the common growing systems. And that's helping inform us on what type of gear we want to use in these areas. And then the last, last piece that you see down there is Born's Pond, and that was last year, a project we did in there with SMass, which resulted in a significant amount of oysters for harvest. So that's kind of a quick recap of some of the projects we've done over the last few years. There are quite a few more than that, however, those are some of our highlights. In two, two thousand and seventeen, we had a draft plan, which was developed by Cia Karpalas, and this was a product of working with town staff members, with Peter Johnson Stubb, myself, members of the initial group, Shellfish Group, in looking at how much nitrogen, first of all, needs to be removed from our estuaries, and then taking a second look at what can be removed by increase in aquaculture. And so what we're going to talk about tonight, if you look down, the second one down, it's Eel Pond. And for anyone that might have any, some issues seeing it, the blue bar, the four thousand, represents the total maximum daily load that needs to be addressed to reach our target goal. And the green above it represents how much can be done with aquaculture. Now, why we're in front of you tonight, one of the reasons is we're starting to move forward with a pilot project. What that pilot project could address is that red box that's kind of within the green box. What that represents is roughly four hundred kilograms of nitrogen, four hundred, you know, roughly, you know, say, over eight hundred pounds of nitrogen, about eight hundred and fifty pounds of nitrogen, or roughly sixty-three sewer connections, if you were to make a translation. Now, before we, before we, before we run, we need to crawl and then walk and do things very deliberate. And we've done that up to this point, and that's what we're looking to do with this pilot project. So before we go full-scale or start to look at kind of the bigger picture of where we're going to go with things, we're going to take a small project, you know, roughly a five or ten percent project, and see if we can make that work, hopefully. And then if that works, we might be able to apply it throughout the town in some of these other areas where you see green. So, you know, simply stated, aquaculture has the potential to be much less costly than hard sewer-ing of areas. How much that's going to be is we're at the next step where we can hopefully work that through and figure out how much of a benefit we can get from that. The areas that we've started to initially look at for the pilot project are, this is Washburn Island, which you see in the photo on the left, and it's in three locations, which are to the northwest of Washburn Island. Just, you know, from kind of a quick overview or a quick look at these photos, these areas are outside the navigational channels. They're outside the mooring fields for the most part. And they're also in areas that do not have a significant amount of shellfish. And the reason that's critical is we need that for permitting purposes, but also we don't want there to be conflict between people who are digging shellfish in those areas. We're currently in the first stage or in Area A right now, wrapping up our shellfish survey work over there, which we've actually done with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Inmates. We do core samples. So we're in the process of that piece right now. There's three proposed areas that we will be looking at, and again, Site A, Site B, and Site C. The first two locations are a hundred and one, sixteen, a hundred and sixty-four feet by sixty feet on the first two, and then the third one is a hundred and twenty-four feet by forty feet across the, by eighty feet across the bottom in two separate segments with a, a way through there, a navigational channel through that area. What I, I kind of want to stop here for a moment and let everyone know is that, and it's really important to point this out, is that when we were working through this pilot, we heard from different members of the committee about what their concerns were, and we were really able to kind of, I feel, come together and address those issues. That was really, a lot of that leadership came from Peter Johnson Stubb, did a tremendous job with us getting us to that point. It hasn't been a fast process, which is sometimes a really good thing. It makes things deliberate, and it makes it so that it's a plan that will work and will ultimately be sustainable. We heard different things from the various members of the group about resource concerns. And, you know, the good thing about this group is we really do have a representation from all different angles on here, and that's what got us to this point. The recommendations that we're bringing to the board is that we will hope that the town will select these sites for increased aquaculture based on a few different things. As I talked about nitrogen removal and water quality considerations, really, we hope we're at kind of the, the paramount of the top of that decision, along with obviously the information from the Shellfish Advisory Committee. And we want to minimize impacts to shellfish, to navigation, to swimming, to boating, to all the users of the resource area. We hope that the Board of Selectmen could work with the Shellfish Advisory Committee and our office as well to initially issue licenses to the Shellfish Constable, myself, which ultimately would be transferred to private growers through a selection, a selected competitive bid process. The licensed growers then would be responsible for removing a certain amount of target nitrogen from our water body. So we have predetermined at this point how much nitrogen needs to be removed to meet those goals, and they're reasonable goals. They're not, they're goals that we have set, that we've grown in that same area, so we know what can be done, and they're achievable. It's really interesting, because up to this point, we've kind of addressed nitrogen as always a very bad thing. And biologically, it is a very bad thing, but in this case, it actually could have some benefits, which is really unique about this. It really kind of represents a true change in how we view nitrogen. And I, I anticipate that you'll see this continue to grow throughout Cape Cod in the New England area as these plans start to come forward. And the last piece to that is, again, the applications for other sites within estuaries we would hope would not be approved. We don't want to see this be an onslaught of permit requests, so we ask that we do this with diligence for nitrogen reduction purposes, not kind of an open, anyone comes into the estuaries, just, you know, slaps in a, a shellfish grant where they'd like. That's not the reason why we're here. Again, we're here for nitrogen reduction, and that needs to take into consideration all the other concerns. An interesting part to what we've worked on in the committee is the concept of an increased use. As we've developed the work that we've done, we have accumulated a lot of equipment, a lot of gear, a lot of knowledge, a lot of potential and ability to do certain things. There are some things that we can do as a community that we can actually, and you don't hear this in government a lot, but we can actually do them more efficiently than the private industry. Not normally expected in the public industry, but we've got this. What that allows us to do is offer some resources to the growing public. And we would hope to offer these resources for a rental fee. And this fee would ultimately be for certain items such as upwellers, fixed gear, overwintering facilities. We've learned how to overwinter shellfish in containers where we can pit them and ice them, and we've developed really good metrics to make that happen very fast. After the shellfish are landed and they're brought to market, we would collect a fee for that. And the, the goal is ultimately, you know, very simply stated, we would allow people to grow in very productive areas for aquaculture and provide the resources for that, while at the same time, we would be benefiting by using the money from those resources to put back into our estuaries, and also for us to grow shellfish in areas where the private industry cannot, places like Little Pond, other estuaries that are so impacted that only the government can grow in those areas. Kind of a timeline of where we're at, this is kind of a quick snapshot that Peter developed for us. This is the, the first shellfish site. I mean, you can read down here, I think as far as the Selectmen are concerned, we hope on five twenty to do the kind of initial reading for that fee hearing, and then hopefully complete that by June third. And then there's also, as far as the Selectmen are concerned, hopefully a license hearing that we could bring forward to the board on June third, and hopefully wrap that up on June twenty-fourth, and then hopefully do the Selectment Award of Licenses to private growers sometime in June or July. That is ambitious, but at this point, so far, we're on task for this, and we hope to keep kind of going with that task. We have just a, kind of a couple simple requests of the board tonight. The first is we hope to update the aquaculture plan, which has been developed by, by my department, by the Assistant Town Manager, Peter Johnson Stubb, by town consultants, consultants both that are working with our department and also other consultants that are working with the Water Quality Management Committee to tie those ends together, the Town Council's Office, and the Shellfish Advisory Committee. This evening, we seek permission from the board to proceed with adopting a policy on aquaculture, which we will bring forward at a future meeting, hopefully. Also to, in the future, hold a licensing hearing and also a fee hearing to discuss a little bit further the fees associated with these opportunities. I, without kind of further, I guess it might be appropriate to take some questions if there's any questions, I.
That would be great. I mean, I, I think this is incredibly brilliant, avant-garde. I mean, it just really shows a lot of cooperation in, in, you know, as you mentioned, with the folks in the room really giving all the input and getting, doing a real balance of interest at the same time where you're really in front of the whole Cape going forward on, on the water quality issue. The one question that, that came to mind is, how does this impact other growing, like, you know, kelp or seaweed or, you know, some, something like that, looking at the audience?
Sure. How, how? How, how would it impact growing it in these-
Is there, is the, does that come into this, or?
Yep. So at this point, the, the type of growing that we would look to do is primarily with shellfish. Um, ironically, when we were doing our survey work out there, we found razor clams, and I got a call tonight when we were here that uh, one of the uh, hatchery farms wants to use the razor clams that we found to create a spawning stock, so they're gonna be hopefully coming down and creating a spawning stock, which is super exciting, because there's really not a spawning stock of these uh, smaller razor clams. So there are other opportunities out there, is what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Um, uh, how they fit into it, how the seaweeds and those type of things fit into it, absolutely something that I think we'll continue to work on, and um, there could be increased benefits down the road from that. I think the only thing that we are concerned about is that um, we, we don't want to have a, a lot of impact on the bottom. I always give the analogy, if you're planting a new lawn, you don't want to park your car on the lawn, right? Um, so we're hoping to get our lawn back, our eel grass, and so we have to be, you know, um, very cautious about how we affect that, but I think there are possibilities in the future, absolutely.
Great. Um, Doug, and then Doug?
Well, so you've got these three sites in the walkway, A, B, and C, and then are we gonna be looking at other estuaries?
Sure, it's a great question. Um, so the initial hope is to, uh, is to look at these three locations first and how they would work. If these are successful, then our, our thought would be to move forward with a more comprehensive implementation of using shellfish uh, as an alternative solution to nitrogen reduction, alternative to sewer-ing, that is.
Okay.
Um, so uh, it is not immediate, uh, but it is something that if there is a high level of success and we do um, receive uh, credit for this, then yes, absolutely, that is something that we would um, hope to pursue, those cost savings.
Okay.
And the request on limiting uh, in, in estuaries-
Sure.
-any other aquaculture alter, does not mean limiting aquaculture outside estuaries, so.
Absolutely.
That's where really the kelp and the-
Grab the deeper waters, yep.
Right, in the deep waters, that's gonna happen, and that's-
Our primary interests are within the estuaries, correct.
Good point, and I said one question.
I know that this was sort of initially a really big part of the, the conversation, but can you just um, describe a little bit about how um, the committee informing this sort of future plan-
Sure.
...really took into account um, the needs of the um, folks who are um, just individuals, you know, commercial-
Sure.
Not, not aquaculture growers, but just fishermen that are-
Regular people that use the resource area, sure. Yeah, so there's a lot of consideration that's given there. Um, I think probably one of the biggest ones is that uh, when we initially went out to look at the areas um, that were initially outlined in the plan, um, the areas that we moved into actually had a soft shell clam flat in those areas, and those areas were pretty close to Washburn Island. And if you think about a lot of the people in that area, access Washburn Island via small boats, um, so there were really a kind of a couple things that came from that. One is to provide access through the farm area, so a smaller boat can actually go through the middle of the farm, there'd be a forty-foot kind of uh, you know, breezeway through there. And second off, moving those away from the island so that there could be lateral access and also not uh, infringing on some of the soft shell clam habitat in that area. Uh, there were multiple things we heard uh, from all different stakeholders, um, and I think what's important to, that I didn't mention, but we will be moving forward um, with some additional, we've had a number of community meetings up to this point, but we hope to have even more community meetings with Waco Bay National Estuary Reserve and a few other uh, neighborhood associations over there. Um, just in case folks haven't heard it at this point, we think they probably have, but we want to keep, uh, keep, keep them abreast of everything that's going on.
Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to add on that the, one of the reasons that this became uh, complicated and took a little bit more time was because we really did, you know, from the beginning, well before my arrival, there was this desire to create a benefit not only for aquaculture farmers, not only for the entire community in terms of water quality, but also for recreational and commercial wild harvest shellfishing. And one of the mechanisms to do that, beyond the very careful screening of the sites where we have the actual aquaculture, is this concept of creating a revenue source that can then be used to purchase more shellfish for propagation that can be broadcast. So, we, you know, we've said that, there's maybe been some healthy skepticism about delivering on that promise, uh, but that's why this rental fee is so important, that we demonstrate that, you know, we really are going to increase the amount of shellfishing that is available to um, the wild harvest folks as well.
Great. That, that was a point that I was, you know, I think it was before your arrival, but not long before, and that was a real concern, we had a number of folks that were just, you know, that's their livelihood and just some concern, so it sounds like it's been just nicely balanced.
Sam?
I have to ask this question on behalf of one of my neighbors who's an avid scallop fisherman.
Sure.
And uh, he's always asking the question, why doesn't Falmouth do more seeding of scallops, uh, Waco Bay in particular?
Yep.
What's, what's the future of scalping in Falmouth?
Yep, so just a little bit on scalping, what we did this year that we have, it's never really been done as far as I'm aware of, is we um, put out a questionnaire and a survey to all of our recreational uh, permit holders, and uh, we actually provided that uh, presentation to the uh, to the Shellfish Working Group Advisory, Advisory Board, uh, after, after the numbers had come out. And um, there were a couple things that we heard from there, the first of which is what you're saying right now, people want more scallops. Uh, what's that ultimately is resulting in, is we're gonna be doubling the amount of scallops that we grow this year. Uh, Mr. Ward is with us this evening, uh, we worked with, with uh, with Dan to initially uh, start a scallop uh, program, seeding program, which had never, all the scallops that we had before were essentially trucked in, uh, just kind of uh, dumped in the water and, you know, we weren't sure how well they did. Uh, Dan worked with us to actually start growing scallops uh, in Falmouth waters, we use Little Pond to raise them, and we're gonna be doubling that this year, uh, on the order of a, a few hundred thousand animals. Um, we had seeded last year, the, I think the problem with scallops, as I say, is that they're the canaries in the coal mines, so we have to clean up the estuary if we're gonna, you know, have the scallops, from, very simply put, we can put a lot of scallops in there, but if the water quality's not there, we're not gonna get it. Uh, but as far as for our responsibility as growing, absolutely, that's part of our program, uh, we're already rigged up for more scallops at this point.
Oh, thanks.
Um, any other questions?
No.
Well, I, I think, um, you know, speak on behalf of, go ahead.
Just one last quick one. So your timeline is kind of compressed now, and you're trying to get somebody on board by June, is that because you think they can still salvage the season at that time?
It certainly will be tight, um, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna uh, suggest that that's not the case. The reality of it is, is that if we are using oysters and they were to be in by, say, July, they still could reach an appropriate size to be overwintered and be viable for the following year, to a degree. It actually might not be a bad thing if they're a little bit smaller because of volume, um, but it is uh, conceivable that that could happen, um, and I think it's a good goal for us to shoot for. Um, I don't wanna see us spin our tires, and if we can work as hard as we can to get that, there is a good possibility that could happen.
Right.
I, I wanted to just comment on the committee, I mean, this is a stellar example of folks that have differing needs and, and commitments and advocacy, really coming together to, you know, to value each other and, and lend support and expertise to each other's views, so I wanna thank the members of the committee that are here, I also wanna thank Mr. Johnson Staub for, you know, helping, you know, this, this idea is really avant-garde and, and I think, you know, very cool, I'm sure everybody thinks that, great presentation as well. Um, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Uh, the next item is the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, uh, Vote Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Guidelines, Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Overview, Authorized Expenditure of Up to $12,000 for Legal and Financial Assistance Expenses, and Presentation and Vote Fund Request from North Star Place LLC for 123 Brick Hill Road, East Falmouth. Uh, Mr. Johnson Staub, are you heading this off?
I'm sure, just-
Sure.
Should we vote approval to tell the Aquaculture Committee to proceed?
It wasn't exactly on the agenda that we were gonna vote, I think they got that we were supportive of all of this.
Okay.
Uh, that's why I didn't separate it out.
Um, if the board is not comfortable making a vote, I think that's fine, we wanted to, um, we wanted to be sure you were aware of the plan, and we wanted to hear any concerns that you might have if there were any concerns.
Right.
Uh, I, I hope I'm taking away from the board's reaction that, um, that we're okay to proceed, you're not making, you know, we'll, we'll be back with more details as each one of these decision points comes forward, but we didn't want to schedule a hearing and have you say, you know, what are you doing?
Right, no, I think they got the go proceed.
Thank you.
Because I think, I, I think there's no problem with us voting that to approval to proceed, because we're not approving any action, we're just telling them to go ahead with their plan.
Sure, you can-
So I would, I would make a motion to give the committee the approval to proceed as they stated before.
Sure.
Who's second there?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Sorry, my question.
No, 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 it's, it's a, well appreciated.
So unfortunately, Carla Feroni, our housing coordinator, um, uh, is not able to join us tonight, she was sick and very regretful that she was not able to be here, so I am subbing for her. So the first item on your agenda is, uh, we were hoping the board would affirm the existing uh, very, you know, sort of simple uh, guy, funding allocation guidelines, and the only reason for that is because when uh, they were approved last year by the Board of Selectmen, it had a, two thousand eighteen was in the title, so it, it seemed like there might be some question whether they still apply, so um, this was not intended as a policy change or a lengthy discussion, um, necessarily, but just to sort of affirm that these guidelines are still in place until um, the board sees fit to modify them.
Okay, does anybody want to read the guidelines so that folks get what it-
Certainly, if you can read them. Board of Trustees Funding Allocation Guidelines, Falmouth Affording Ho- Affordable Housing Fund monies, excuse me, Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund monies are available on a limited basis for projects that support the Board of Trustees' funding priorities. The F A H F will review the housing pipeline and the target allocations, and will adjust awards within the range based on expected applications and a determination of the current housing needs of Falmouth. The trustees may allocate up to $65,000 per unit with a specific amount to be determined based upon the review of the community benefit and the particular aspects of each project.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate, the trustees are, that's us.
Exactly, I was gonna make that point clear too.
A move approval of those um, guidelines which are the same as, have been in place, but just to be clear that they still apply.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I just want to point out, I think today we all received a letter from the Falmouth Housing Corporation Committee, uh, just expressing, since she's not here, we can embarrass her to, as much as we want to, uh, just expressing the amount of work that Carla Feroni has been doing as our newest, our first housing coordinator ever, uh, and just has done a tremendous amount of work in making things actually do that we're, we're trying to get done in affordable housing, and uh-
Yeah.
I think she's, does need to be commanded by her committee and by us for her efforts.
Absolutely, and I see some committee members here, thank you for attending and staying this late night, Sam?
I just want to remind us that it, it is the Community Preservation Committee that is actually funding this position, and so if we think this is a viable position, we really ought to be thinking about putting it into the operating budget and not relying on CPC funds.
Agreed.
Yeah, just to clarify, that has been our plan all along, just to uh, seek which we, and secure which we have, uh, seed funding for the first two to three years, ultimately to be uh, moved into the general fund with the concurrence of the board.
Thank you, good point. Uh, so the, we're on to the second item, which is the overview?
Yes, in your packet you have a two-page document, it might be uh, slightly out of order, I think you have a memo about some, an authorization of funds that comes before it in the packet, but we, we simply wanted to um, highlight that there are significant projects that uh, have been approved to date, uh, and those are the, uh, the long-running Falmouth Housing Corporation Spring Bars Little Pond Place Project, uh, that's a funding allocation of $750,000, and uh, the board will be hopefully looking at approving a lease next week, and they hope to be breaking ground in May. Uh, May first is the, is the target. Uh, another Falmouth Housing Corp. project, uh, 587 Gifford, ten units adding to their existing unit, that's $650,000. Uh, the Falmouth Housing Trust, uh, this board has approved $65,000 for a single-family home on Deer Pond, and McGansett Crossing LLC Apartments, uh, has received a approval from this board for $650,000 for ten units. And so those are projects previously approved by the board. We currently have two pending requests, and we're going to be hearing from uh, one of them tonight. Uh, the, the um, timeline for the Brick Hill Apartments that you'll be hearing about, the application was received, reviewed by the working group, um, recommended to the CPC, CPC in turn on, just last week, did recommend approval of that, uh, that project as well, that's twenty uh, affordable rental units at 123 Brick Hill Road, and that um, recommendation, the project request was $975,000, the, the balance is less than that, so the recommendation from the, the working group and CPC is $650,000, uh, and then an additional $325 subject to future appropriation. Uh, now that recommendation from the working group was voted before we received the application from Michael Galasso for Clippership Apartments to add on to that existing development, and the board will be hearing a presentation on that request next week, uh, that is for ten affordable rental units for $650,000, and we just received a letter of intent, I believe two weeks ago, and an application last week, uh, so this is extremely expedited, and the reason for that is that there is a grant um, deadline of the end of April. Um, so we really haven't, you know, the, the uh, the review of that hasn't really had time to take place, but we're, we're trying to expedite that as much as we can.
Can I ask a logistical question here to be sure I understand that this remark from the working group on the Brick Hill Place, March twenty, two thousand nineteen, $650,000 was approved because of a limitation in the available funds, which, you know, would have requested 975,000, and so the working group recommended that as soon as available, that additional 325 be joined with the 650.
Right.
So it's a complete package in, in order to move this project forward.
Right, and I think we'll need to really, so the, the idea from the working group was to provide the applicant um, with a combination of, um, you know, the start of what this board might codify as a firm approval for the 650,000, and more along the lines of a, an intent for the remainder, that couldn't be, and, and we would spell that out in a, in a detailed uh, award letter, that the $325,000 would, you know, would need to be considered as no more than, we support the project and, you know, we hope to someday have funds to approve it.
I see. And so how would it work, you know, it seemed, however the funding comes in, the 650 is, you know, kind of in this bucket in this project, and then there's, they're waiting for the 325.
Right.
And then behind that, we have another 650 request, but even when the 325 comes in, we're only gonna have another 325 available potentially?
Well, we don't-
Depending on that approval?
Right, so we don't know what the CPC is going to appropriate, uh, and they, it's possible there won't be any appropriation until next November, so not this November of nineteen, but November of two thousand twenty. Uh, that, you know, there might be a small amount that might be released this, this coming November, but normally, the, the, that's the cycle, is that um, the larger appropriations are made in, at the November meetings. I, I'm sorry, no, the April.
April.
It is, I'm sorry, I'm mixing that up. So there's some chance there could be some funds released this November, but likely not a lot, so it would be next April.
Right.
That would, um, there would be potential for a larger sum, and whether that sum might be $300,000 or a million, we, we really don't know.
Okay, and how does this work with other grant funding in terms perhaps from the state or otherwise, I mean-
Yeah, so that-
Is that part of the application process? Because we want builders to be able to, we don't want the part, project to be started and not finished.
So we, uh, so there are a couple questions in there, um, let's, let's deal with the, the grant issue first. We've, the, the guidelines have been primarily around per-unit amount, so, you know, one applicant may be able to construct at $65,000 per unit without any state funds, and another might um, need that same $65,000 and need state funds to produce that same unit. So we haven't really focused on the leveraging aspect, it's a legitimate consideration, certainly not the only one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then there's the timing question, and that's a very relevant question, and it's, it's challenging because the, uh, these projects, because of- And it's, it's challenging because the, these projects, because of grant, you know, state grants in particular and other financial matters and other legal matters can easily take two years between one, you know, needing some sort of funding commitment from us and construction. So we have a process where we generally allow two years for substantial completion with, and that's not to say that, you know, that the funds are gone after two years, but it would require another approval so that we don't have funds committed indefinitely and, and not make them available to new projects. But, you know, less than two years, it, it can be difficult to say, well, you know, we need you to, we need you to complete this project right away or we're not going to give you the money. It's a bit of a chicken, you know.
Sounds like dredge permitting.
Yeah, yeah.
Like our new dredge reality, right?
Sam?
Yeah, I might mention that also in consideration system on this working group is that the developers basically say they're going to put a lot of the infrastructure in for the entire development, even though they won't build all of it immediately. So they may build 10 out of the 20 units. But they want to put the road and all the power and the drainage, you know, stormwater drainage and that sort of thing. And septic system of situations, how is, how is the septic going to be treated? That all has to be kind of put into the plan in certain, so there's a, a kind of, a kind of economy of efficiency if you can go ahead and do all that upfront and then build out your units in a sequential manner after that's in place. So that was one of the rationales for giving the larger amount of money upfront with the understanding that when revenues were available, we would be able to fund additional 325,000.
That's a sensible plan, Doug?
I think we received some relevant comments today regarding the grant application and the fact that typically these developments are funded by several grant opportunities. And I think in the future, we might want to consider whether that should be a criteria for consideration. So we know that we're contributing to a viable project that's got more support than just us. I don't think that's possible for this, but.
Megan?
And I would say I think that's particularly true if you get folks we're not familiar with. You know, I think the reality has been we get a lot of similar, you know, individuals or organizations that are led by individuals that we have a pretty good track record with. You know, just thinking about sort of the projects that Linda Clark has been a part of and same with Mike Galasso. I mean, you know, I think it's helpful when we have that, but you raise a good point. If there are other individuals stepping in that we aren't as familiar with and we don't know what their process is like, I think it is helpful to have an understanding of, of sort of where, you know, where their ideas at in terms of the funding piece of it.
And that's a great segue to the fact that we are having a joint meeting again on affordable housing because, you know, there, it's, there are a lot of, a lot of, you know, cogs in the wheel here. And in terms of putting applications together in a manner that allows staff to expedite things and, and that, you know, we can, it's really meant to be a, a working session to figure out what, what works the best and, and what's a good model and, and moving forward on that. And that'll be coming up next Monday, do we, okay. So that's coming events, so.
Actually, one other thing.
Sure, please.
That needs to be in the picture, and that's the ongoing operation of these subdivisions. These can't be just built up and then just left to whoever the tenants are there. There needs to be a monitoring of how well these projects are being managed. Because, you know, you need some kind of oversight. You just can't let subdivisions just kind of go off on their own. Because some will thrive and others will not, you know. But the town's making an investment and I think we need a kind of a long-term view of how well these projects are going to be managed.
That's a, that's what 706 Main is, is just one of the great, great models.
Absolutely. You know, I think that's why we have so much confidence in Falmouth Housing Corp. Because we've seen how well they manage their properties. But we can't assume that's going to be true for all developers.
So maybe we can have an agenda item for our joint meeting to try to come up with some parameters and guidelines for, I mean, if we're the trustees of this fund and now we've had this policy in place, we're going to see more of these.
Each of these ones does. They all have to have a monitoring agent for them to go forward, right?
It's not the same thing.
Okay.
Monitoring agencies, they just simply look to see whether the deed restriction is being honored and whether if somebody sells their unit, if it's an ownership unit, right, the proper listing procedures and vetting of the eligible buyers is.
Are you talking about management monitoring?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good point for the next meeting.
Monitoring agents is a subject in its own because it's not really a very good system from our perspective as to well, how, in, how involved monitoring agents are in watching what's going on in these properties. They, they don't get any income from it. And that's, there's a business model issue that goes along with monitoring agents.
Thank you.
But I just think for that joint meeting, it'll be helpful for us to, I think it's a mystery to some of us, I'll say, I'll just speak for myself. It's a mystery to me to just sort of, it'll be nice to get an idea of how all of this kind of comes together, right? We've had all these different entities somewhat connected, somewhat overlapping, and now we're trying to really consolidate. And, and I think it'll be helpful for this board to understand the process of where things, how they work through before they come to us. You know, and the steps that, I'm sure there is some criteria, right, that, that is reviewed. And we are not part of that, that, that process necessarily, so it'd be nice to have that. I think that's why that meeting is long overdue, to really have that conversation flush that out.
And what can the town do to facilitate these? So that it's easier for staff and, and things are more proficient and it's more attractive for the developers? So that's what is intended, Peter?
And a great segue to the next item on your agenda.
Yes, I know, right?
Which is a request to authorize up to $12,000 in expenditures for technical assistance from financial consultants and legal. These, these are very complex applications and transactions and our in-house legal staff is terrific in assisting us with that. But they have requested that we bring in some outside counsel to help expedite the, the production of, of the legal documents on the legal side. And on the financial side, it is, we believe, an important part of the process. Not, it's not required for every project, you know, if there's a one single-family home being constructed, we don't need to hire a financial consultant for that. But if you're talking about a 40-unit, you know, Little Pond development, there, you know, we, it might be critically important that we support it. We want, might want to put the lion's share of what's available toward that project. But we don't want to do that if the, if the finances don't make sense and it's just going to flounder for two years and then ultimately be unsuccessful. So in order to accomplish the objective of a good financial review and, and not take forever to do it, it would help to have a little bit of money to spend for that.
Doug?
So I would move that the Board of Selectmen acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund authorize up to $3,000 per F A, F A H F project for a total of up to $12,000 for financial reviews and special counsel.
Does that, just a quick question on that motion. Since some projects are more complex than others, is that going to work for you, that amount?
Yeah, I think, I think the $3,000 will be sufficient for the larger projects.
Great, is there a second?
I second it there.
Oh, thanks, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you. Lastly, we have the project proponent for the Brick Hillen Road project that, that the board is being asked to consider for action tonight.
Welcome.
My name is Nick Mirione. I'm here representing John De Sangro and Dana Wessel, the owners of the project. The project is located on Brick Hillen Road between Jamie and Sophie Lanes. It's 20 units in 10 buildings, 10 duplex buildings, 16 two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units. The project was approved with, by way of a comprehensive permit back in October of 17. It required five of those units to be affordable and 15 to be market rate. We were having a little difficulty making the numbers work on a rental project and we became aware of the program we're here talking about tonight, the Community Preservation Committee Program. And we made our application, submitted our letter of intent, which led to an application and a meeting with the working group. And that led to an approval which went to the Community Preservation Committee and led us to where we are here tonight. The units are all on one road that ends in a cul-de-sac. I don't know if, do you have any questions, be more specific? I don't know what you want to know about the units themselves, but they're, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units with bathroom in each one. No garages, extra parking for every unit, underground utilities. And we're, we're trying to address that very important need of rental housing in two-bedroom units in the town that your, what are your plans to speak of?
Questions?
Well, our questions are more like on the financial end of it. I know you've already been through the planning board and I think, I remember reviewing the package. We get notified when the planning board or zoning board is doing projects. So I saw that it had everything that a project would require. There was no variances or waivers. So we're, we're really looking at the financial overview for the town more than just the site plan.
Questions?
The other question would be the same question. We had a letter from a citizen today saying that many times projects like these seek multiple grant sources, like two or three other different entities. And that way you're getting a better, the town gets a better value for its money for the part that we put in. So in the future, if there's other developments, you might consider that as well.
Well, we, we have conventional financing on this that, that works for now. That gets us to, along with the money from the committee, gets us to the project built. The permanent financing, we're planning on filing with Mass Housing Partnership. We're meeting with them next week. They have a very good permanent financing program for rental projects. And they're very anxious to talk to us about this. But with this money, we can still make the project work with conventional financing.
Did the working group get a much more detailed financial picture of this plan?
We did.
Okay, I mean, typically when we get the request for it, we get, we also see how it all is going to fit together and I.
Mr. Johnson, stop, maybe you could give an overview?
Yeah, I, I just want to apologize that you, you should have had more information in your packet. I did provide the, the cover application, but we did have the one-stop application that shows more of the financial details. Again, this was all somewhat rushed because we had the, the other project with an April 29 deadline and we were trying, sort of scrambling to put the board in a position to at least consider that other application. And so, yeah, so we, so we did, we, we did have a look at the, at the financials in a little bit more detail. And again, you know, I think it's an interesting question if, if the amount required from the town is $65,000 per unit without leveraging any other state funds and there's another project that also requires $65,000 per unit from the town and requires state funds to make it, to make it work. Which is the, is one a better deal for the town than the other? I, I guess, I guess I'm not sure I, I understand that.
Well, that, you know, there's also the consideration of, you know, in, more units are generally in the town's best interest. And so how, you know, what's the best way to achieve more units? And, you know, certainly partnering does allow the town, you know, just like our own budgets at home. You know, if there, if we have help with some of our bills, we can sort of spread, spread it out more, so.
Right, but, but what we have is, again, from the, the town's cost is the same for both. And why is that? You know, I don't, you know, you'd, you'd have to ask the project proponents, but I think at, at surface, it's because, you know, either the developer is a, you know, is taking less of a profit or they're smaller, you know, less costly units to construct. So you'd have, you'd have to be looking at, are we getting something that, you know, we think is going to serve the community better for that $65,000? As opposed to, well, automatically because there's multiple publics. I mean, you could argue that it's a worse investment because we're paying taxes for it twice.
Megan?
Yeah, I think that just to, I was going to sort of comment along those same lines as Peter that I think, you know, the numbers are kind of the numbers, but you have to look at what the, the product is.
Yes.
What, you know, need does it serve? You know, the quality of projects, I mean, different, you know, different projects have a different character. They fit in, in the town in different ways. You know, rentals, we talk about a lot as something that's particularly, you know, a deficit in our community. So, you know, for the $65,000, it, it also depends on what you're getting. So I think that that, you know, those are the pieces that I think are, are helpful to know when you're thinking about expending those funds. It's not just the sheer number of, I mean, I know the number of rooms, you know, the number of affordable units gets us to a place. But at the end of the day, if that doesn't really serve the needs of the community, all we're doing is hitting a benchmark that the, the state has set that doesn't really necessarily bring a value to the community. So I think you have to look at the, the nature of the project as well.
So what we're being asked tonight is to vote the fund request from North Star Place for 123 Brick Hillen Road in East Falmouth. Recommendation from the working group being 650 and additional 325 subject to available funds.
Madam Chair?
John Drewery is a member of the working group and he wants to have a.
Oh, thank you, please. Thank you, Sam. Welcome, John.
Good evening, John Drewery, and I'm a member of the working, the working group. I just wanted to say a couple of things. The $65,000 is for, for-profit developers, is for additional units. So this applicant has to do five units according to their comprehensive permit. They have offered to put a deed restriction on the additional 15 units for this money. So all 20 units are going to be affordable with a deed restriction, which is an asset to the town. They're deed restricted forever. And secondly, we're talking about another applicant that we have just received, this application. It doesn't mean it's been approved, we haven't vetted it yet. And, and with that applicant, I read, I read the application yesterday. With that application, out of the 10 units, the zoning board of appeals decision requires eight of them to be affordable. And in the application, they're asking to be funded for all 10 of them. And so maybe that'll happen, maybe it won't happen. You guys are the deciding factor in the end, but we haven't vetted that application yet. So I would, I would rather, we have something at hand here that could be a great project for the town. And also, without the money, these gentlemen may not even be able to do the project at all. So maybe for the, the money being spent, you get 20 units instead of getting no units. And, and as Peter was saying, they're not asking for state funding. So maybe their project is, maybe they paid less for the land, maybe they're, they're willing to put their sweat equity into it to make the numbers work. But these are the things that we've already vetted. And so I just wanted to clarify that, number one, all 20 units are going to be affordable. And the funding is for the 15 additional units to be deed restricted, so.
Appreciate that, appreciate your comment.
That's a very important point, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Please.
If I could go back to Selectman Jones' question about, you know, usually having more detailed information. I don't want the board to feel pressured that you need to make a decision tonight. This project isn't, you know, one week or two weeks is, is not of critical import to this project. What I didn't want to have happen is to have you make a, a vote on the other application on the 29th without thorough vetting and without understanding that this application is already pending and already vetted. So I, I don't want to necessarily discourage a vote either, but I just want to say, you know, if you're not comfortable, if you want to take a, a closer look at the financials, we can certainly put it off.
I'm very happy to trust the working groups looking at the financials. I just want to make sure it had been done.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same, I think, you know, hearing some of that extra information. But that's what the working group is for, it doesn't mean that we abdicate our review of it, but, you know, I think there's been a thorough examination of it. So I feel comfortable, I would feel comfortable making a vote on that.
Okay.
Does someone have a motion?
Yes, I would move approval. Is there a specific motion or can we just move approval? Just a specific language?
$650,000, I think.
Yeah, it's.
Has to be part of.
Move them out, okay.
And if, if we could make it explicit in that acting as the trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay. Acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, I would move $650,000 with an additional $325,000 subject to available funds for the Brick Hillen Place Project. for the Brick Hill Place project by North Star LLC, John De Sangro.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much for the presentations.
Good luck.
The next item on the agenda is vote to approve a request for waiver of special event permit fee. The first is Falmouth Farmers Market. Hi, welcome. Thanks for coming.
It's almost time for the farmers market to start. You've waited so long.
Thanks for waiting. Did you bring snacks? Did you?
I know, should have brought, should have brought snacks. I'm Lindsay Close. I'm here for the farmers market. It's so late. I don't want to take up too much time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We're doing great. We so appreciate our partnership with the town. Our volunteer board is working hard to get everything set up for the start in May, so.
Great. Are there questions from the board?
Now, in your third year, you must have everybody on regular pace.
Yeah, yeah.
In that location?
Yeah, third year in that location. We were just talking about, I think it's our 12th year.
Wow, that's amazing.
12 years in that location?
Uh, no, we had nine years at, yeah, third year in that location, nine years prior at Peg Noonan.
Well, is there a preference by the board?
I would move that we stick with the policy we had last year of the permit fee reduced to $200 in cash and $500 in kind to maintain the Harbor Masters Gardens.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for staying.
See you at the market.
Absolutely. Next is for the Falmouth Art Market. Is someone here for the art market? Okay, same, same request. What's the board's pleasure?
Well, I think it's a similar kind of asset for the town, so.
I would, yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say move approval. I have it in front of me for the permit fee reduced to 200 plus $500 in kind to maintain Harbor Masters. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the same one. I was going to say that's some very familiar. 12 to the permit fee. Yes, so they're looking for the, for it to be reduced. Is that correct? To the 2400. Oh, I don't have that. Right, never mind. I can't help it.
There are two from here?
Permit fee reduced to $300, 100 for the first, 100 for last, and $100. That's what we did last year, so. Are people comfortable with that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Helpful. The next is for John Wesley United Methodist Church, Sunday Beach Worship.
What we did last year was to reduce it to $262.50 for the permit fee rather than $600.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. I'm really having logistical challenges with this efficiency.
I would move approval of the following licenses.
Thank you.
Lodging house license for Elizabeth Hathen and Woodsville Passage, and in on the sound.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second-hand dealer license for Cape Cod Gold and Silver Coin, Cashpoint, Falmouth Service Center, Falmouth Stamp and Coin, Faze Gallery, Anus Jewelers, Home Again, St. Vincent de Paul Thrift Shop, Uncle Bill's Country Store, and Village Land Prepare Shop.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And for Bowling Alley License, Ryan Family Amusements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion of makeup and structure of the poorhouse working group. This is something we initially discussed fairly recently. And the question tonight is to really talk about what the options are and what would be a good makeup for the working group. I note that Mr. Haddad has stuck with us and other interested folks. I, I think, sure.
Madam Chair, could I make a few introductory comments if I may?
Sure, and just before that, and I just wanted to check with the board, what, what I think might make sense is to ask for a minute of public comment by whoever is here, just in terms of input for food for the board, and then a discussion afterwards. Does that seem to make sense?
Sounds good.
Mr. Suso.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to, just remind the board, I'm, I think you're probably aware, back in January, I committed to Historical Commission Chair Edward Haddad, who's with us tonight, of course, that I would share with him and seek the review and comment of he and others on the Historical Commission of activities related to the Marx Building. And I guess what I wanted to, my intent at that point essentially was to have the Historical Commission function as the working group. And that was put in motion by way of commitment already. And my question is, would the board be comfortable with that template continuing? And of course, the Historical Commission can only meet in a public session so that any other interested parties that wanted to participate and join in one or more meetings in regard to any discussions about the Marx Building could do so and participate in that forum. If we move in another direction, then it seems to me what this town manager is going to have is two separate groups of both potentially reviewing and commenting on activities related to Marx Building, which gets a bit unwieldy. I hope you can appreciate. So that's, therefore, my suggestion to the board for your potential consideration.
Just before we hear from, from the folks here, the, my thought on that would be that we could also flip it around and have the, you know, commission represented on the working group, if, if we're going to call it a working group. Because it, you know, I'm thinking that, for example, if you have, if you say you need a, the contribution of a builder, somebody who knows construction, if they just make guest appearances at, at the, the commission, it's, you know, it's a little unwieldy because that might be something that requires more continuity of interest. And I also, the commission's only meeting, I think, once a month now or give or take. And to this is a, you know, it's a sort of a big demand to put on that schedule. So that, that's just my thought on that idea. Mr. Haddad, while you're coming up, Ms. Braga, if you want to.
Yes, and just to sort of move along from that point, I think we've heard enough from, we've heard so much from sort of the public about this particular piece of property. I think it warrants, it's, it's in line with the way we've tried to address sort of that community outpouring of concern or interests is to try to put a working group together. It allows other people who aren't on established committees to kind of focus in on a particular project. So I, I think that the response we've had from the community warrants something a little bit different.
Mr. Haddad?
Historical Commission. The issues with the poorhouse restoration is obviously a long-term project, and it's very complex. I'm sure you all realize it's a very complex project because of certainly the age of the building, the complexity of how you would treat it. And then we have preservation restrictions internal and external that we have to deal with somehow. And then ultimately, we're going to, any design plan that we would want to, let's say, contract for a design plan and then execute would have to be, how are we going to use that building? What's the ultimate use? Because that's how the inside will be configured, is based on what are you going to do with it? You just can't restore it to what it looked like before, and then all of a sudden say it's not good for modern use. So it's very complex. So I think the idea of different fact, different parties as part of a working group makes sense than putting that whole burden on the Historical Commission itself. And then I think that would also, I think, take it a lot longer to, to get done. So I, I guess my point is I'm agreeing with the, a unified group of people that have the expertise and the, and the vested interest in wanting to be part of the project.
Thank you. Anyone else have a contribution, a thought, a suggested expertise that might lend value to this idea? Susan?
Susan Shepherd, Precinct One, and I'm a member of the Preservation Alliance and a few other things. And I'm very much in favor of having this building restored, not renovated. And so I agree with the approach. I, the last meeting I came to, there was a lot of praise from the selectmen about the group you put together for the plan for the T-Ticket Highway. And I think this is a group that could be as effective, or whatever your ultimate group is. I think you need a builder or two on this. I think you need local people. And there are a number of people who were very involved in working on the building back in, Doug Brown may remember what year it was, the first go-round on it, and then there was another go-round after that. A lot of the same people were involved, and I think a number of them would be interested in being on such a group. I think, I think it's a really worthwhile thing, and I sort of love the fact that you're approaching it possibly this way.
Thank you. Please, Holly.
I'm sorry.
I'm Holly Wilson. I'm Precinct Two, and I'm a member of the Human Services Committee, as you know, because you appointed me. And I would hope that the working group would include representation from that group because there has been talk about moving the offices there. And I'm personally in favor of having the building historically repaired. But I also would like to see it function in a way that benefits the town more than a museum maybe would or something like that. We have quite a lot of that, and I'd like to see it used as it was, it was used in the past to benefit people in the town. That it would also be able to work that way.
Thank you. Good point. Did I cut you off?
I'm sorry.
Doug, in the, or Tom.
I just wanted to confirm regarding human services, just to remind anybody watching that that has already been voted by this board, that actually the Human Services Department is going to be located in the main level of the Marx Building. And actually, we're working to put that in motion. We do not have a plan yet to present at this point, but it is a project that's underway with an architect. Pardon me, Selectman Jones?
What I'm curious about, and this touches on Mr. Suso's point, to whom would the working group report? Would they report to us? And then we'd have to go back to the Historical Commission to get their approval? Would they report to the Historical Commission? Because I would think the Historical Commission would want to have some input on what happens to this building.
That's a good point.
And it just.
Mr. Haddad, do you want to speak to that?
There's two points. I think, I'll answer your point as well. I think it might make sense to report to the Planning Department because we have expertise in there. We certainly have a, a valuable resource in Corey Pacheco with his background in historic preservation. So he's, he would be a great resource and consultant, you know, certainly Tom Bott is, as the town planner would have the expertise to guide the group and facilitate the group well. So I think that would make sense to, to put it someplace there. Just a second point as far as the makeup, consider about the makeup of the group. I would not recommend anybody that would have a vested interest in it, either as a tenant or a builder, because I don't want them, somebody there for their own objective. I think the, the objective should be the preservation and restoration of the building and ultimately what the use, you know, to make it the most usable building that we can for the benefit of the town, not for any particular use. And you might get that, you might get that if you have people on there who have a vested interest in. What I'm going to get out of this as well, so just a point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one other clarification. I really need to know from the selectmen whether you're intending to have a selectmen committee or a town manager-appointed working group. And I think that touches on the issue that Selectman Jones brought up. Obviously, they function quite differently and, and have a different timetable and responsibility.
Sure. So an example of the town manager committee is the aquaculture. Do I have that right?
Aquaculture.
Oh, so that was Selectman.
The original Shellfish Working Group was.
The original was, but not this one.
Not the Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Thank you, okay.
Great example of both.
In one committee. Thank you. Megan?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sam. You had your hand first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think regardless of how this unfolds, it's got to be seen as something projected out over a five-year, 10-year kind of plan. This cannot be, all right, this is it. We're going to do it. We're going to build it, and this is the way it's going to come out. Because I just don't think that's going to be happening. But there's got to be sort of a long range evolutionary way of looking at this building. It's just too complicated to, to build it out the first time and.
Megan?
Kind of accomplish what Ed is suggesting.
So I think, you know, it should be a committee that's appointed by the selectmen. Again, because I think we've heard a lot of public sentiment around this. And I think the Coastal Residency Action Committee is a great example where their trajectory is pretty long. They're not even giving us a report for quite a while. I know Doug is frustrated by that. As it should be, but, but there's a reason for it. It's because of exactly what Sam is saying. They're also looking at a complex challenge with many, many moving parts. Quite a bit more complex, frankly, than restoring this, this property while that will be complicated. But you can have a working group that has a longer trajectory. And, and, you know, I think it needs to be a group that has public, is required to have public meetings and post, you know, those minutes and things like that so that we can have. We've really, the, the history of this building has been sort of piecemeal, you know, attempts to just deal with it. We haven't really had a good, in a while, a good, comprehensive, long-term view of all the moving parts. So I think a committee that's established and appointed by the board of selectmen, it allows us to kind of look at the makeup and touch upon some of these members that we've heard from individuals and that we've talked about. And then, and then they can have a charge that somewhere, I agree with Sam, we're not looking for an answer or a plan in a few months. That doesn't make any sense. This is a more sort of long-term project.
I guess I'm going to disagree. I just worry that we're going to be setting ourselves up, okay, so we have the poorhouse working group. Now then, we're going to have the Tony Andrews Farmhouse Working Group. I mean, all these groups are pointed by, you know, if we're going to do this for the poorhouse, we need to do it for the senior center. We're going to need to do it for the Tony Andrews Building. We're going to need to do it for the Emerald House. I also think if it's a working group, one of us can be appointed to it. If it's our group, we can't. We can't appoint ourselves to this committee. And I think it might be a more manageable and actually a more efficient to have it be a working group appointed by the town manager. And ultimately, out of that may come a larger, bigger, more, you know, more official group. But I think from the beginning, it might make sense to, let's just get started with using Tom Bott, using Corey Pacheco, using a representative as a selectman that the town manager appoints to get started with this.
So back to the aquaculture model, where we started with the working group and then went to, Doug?
I just think that we need this committee, whether it's appointed by selectmen or town manager, because I think the first mission would be to decide what would be that use in that second floor. And that's not a, something that the Historic Commission is going to decide. So that's something we really have to think about, and that will be what drives the whole thing.
Megan? And I think we have been using working groups, and we did have a senior center working group. We did. So I, I understand it can kind of spiral out of control, but nothing requires us to ever do it. So I guess, yes, there's definitely a danger that everything can become so specialized that there are 32 separate working groups and it's unwieldy and unmanageable. But I think mostly it'll be something that polices itself, whereas there's got to be enough interest in that particular subject matter to really bear out the need for that, so.
What, what about the, the makeup? I mean, I, I talked about, I think, the importance of having a builder to, it sort of helps to have some expertise in, in that area. I think it is beneficial to have a selectman on, on the committee. So I, in that respect, I guess I would be leaning more toward.
Jeez, if we had one that was both.
Can we get a twofer?
Yeah, exactly.
If you're stepping up, I think that would be a, a great idea. Other expertise that we might be looking for, certainly the staff expertise, as you mentioned, you know, Corey, Tom Bott, as was suggested by Ed, makes sense. Of course, having someone from the historical. And maybe a couple of community members. Susan Shepherd talked about three or four folks that are, you know, really anxious to, to put an oar in the water in this endeavor. What do, what do folks feel about the size to suggest to the town manager or makeup to suggest to the town manager? If we go with the town manager committee?
My leaning is if we go to the town manager committee, we've done everything, everything we need to concerning makeup and size. That, I wouldn't tell him what to do. I think he's heard our recommendations and ideas and.
Well, he wants to just not, just go with historic, so I don't, I want to, I think it would be helpful to have some guidance since we're going.
Well, you suggested, you suggested builder, you suggested. Well, you suggested, you suggested builder, you suggested the community members, you suggested the town officials, or the-
Historical Commission.
Right?
Yeah.
But also there's the potential users, that at least can be drawn in.
Human services, you were mentioning.
And I think that's a foregone conclusion at this point. They're going to be moving into that building.
I think that communication's important, yeah.
And if we're going to be, if this group is recommended to report to the Planning Department, I mean, how would that be implemented?
There's no way to make that function with a Town Manager Appointed Committee. I mean, it really needs to, needs to appoint, report to the town manager.
Okay.
And those staff members would certainly be involved. They have been throughout our work with the Marx Building, so that's not going to change, so.
I think you have to see this as a municipal building, and as a, as a result, you know, it's almost, it's got to fall on Julian's plate, you know. How is this building going to be used as part of providing facilities for town staff and the services that the staff provides to the community? So I see it very much, it's real estate, and it's the town's real estate, and how is it best invested on behalf of the citizens of the town? And that's, that's traditionally the town manager's role.
I, I agree. I just want to be sure, now that we've sort of gotten to this point, because, you know, we, we have a bit of competing goals here. We have important human service space that the town manager, under our request, has been looking to facilitate a better space for. You know, there are plans in place, design plans, moving plans, that's, you know, it's kind of a big project. So I certainly see that view. But what this board wanted to be sure didn't get sort of left too far behind in terms of the competing interests, is the, the restoration of the building. And, you know, I think that, and that's what was requested by the community. And so I, you know, I want to be sure that that continues to get addressed. Megan?
Yeah, I just, I feel, I feel strongly that I think if it is a board where we actually have people submit applications, and, I mean, we're talking about, there are several members in the community who have expertise. Well, we may know some of them, but we don't, you know, we're not sure that they get on the board if we're not kind of calling forth people to put in application, make sure it's a nice balanced makeup. You know, I think that the, the, there's a lot of sentiment, whether it's a hundred percent valid or not. I mean, there's, there's always a little bit, you know, truth to each thing, but that sometimes, you know, we kind of barrel through, because people are well-intentioned, we want to get things done. And then we have an enormous kind of pushback from the community. We saw this with the Route Twenty-Eight project, right, where people were kind of clamoring for a more structured public input with public meetings. And I think that this is another one of those issues that, because of the history of the building, because it's connected to Eddie Marx, because, you know, the, the, just the historical nature, and there's a lot of kind of emotion and sentiment and passion about this, this particular project. And I don't, you know, I don't think that it is a negative thing to have a board that's, to raise sort of the profile of it, so that it's, people apply, we make up a, you know, make up a group and, and they can, you know-
So you're strongly in favor of Selectmen's Committee?
I am, because I think that that's-
I would support that.
The amount of energy behind this calls, in my, in my opinion, calls for that.
And, and that was kind of the point I was trying to make, in terms of how did we get here? And, and I don't want to go, go backwards. Do you, Sam?
Yeah, the thing I'm struggling with in deciding which way to go is, you know, it's fine for people to step up and say, we want to put NGOs in that building. Well, hey, it's municipal space. Is that in fact what we should be doing, is providing free real estate to charitable groups supposedly, or at least not-for-profit groups? Is that the business we want the town to be in? Is it in the best interest of the town to use it for that kind of space? I have a problem with that. And I've heard people voicing that to me as well. You know, we don't want to be supplying office space for people who aren't renting it essentially, right? And so that-
I think that's a different proposal, because I get your concern.
Well, but that's what I'm hearing some people pushing for.
Well, what's before the board? What's before the board is that, and in fact, Ed Headed made the point very well, that it only, it would make sense to restore in the context of the use. And the only thing we have right now is the municipal use, so I think that-
Well, that's a direction we can give. I mean, if, if it's a Selectmen's Board, if part of our directive is asking, tasking this board with looking at ways, you know, how do we preserve or not restore, whatever the correct language is, with the idea of maximizing sort of municipal, you know, the municipal benefit, while, you know, sort of honoring and acknowledging all those other pieces.
I like that.
I mean, you know, I think that that's, again, if we are setting the, the working group, we can be more directive with some of that, with what we're asking of them, just like we did for Coastal Resiliency.
Right, and for the Route Twenty-Eight. So I, I think that those are good models. Doug, did you?
Well, I think the public committee's good, because I'll do less work, but I can still be the liaison.
Yes, that's right.
Doug? Ed?
Can I make a comment about this, the public group? You know, as opposed to if, if this was, you know, a plot of land, you were going to build a building, and you wanted to get public input as to what does the building look like, what, how are we going to use it, what's the size? I get it, like the Senior Center. We know what this building's going to look like. It's, it's, it's a restoration, especially on the exterior. The town has to decide what the interior is going to be based on use. Not the public is going to say, well, we'd like to put an ice cream vendor in the first floor, or popcorn maker in there, you know. The, the town is going to have to decide what's the use. It's a municipal building. So I, I'm not, I'm just saying, there's not a lot of public here to tell us what to do with it. The town has to decide what's going to go inside, and I think the restoration project is going to tell you what the outside's going to be like. So it's, I'm not, it's not black and white, but it's not, it's not a public input project, I think, like the Senior Center was, you know, where there was so much input in, so.
Right, good distinction.
There's, I think it's a distinction, just to make that point.
Or different butters, who have interest in what it's going to be, right?
No, that's another good point, because it's, that's our, you know, our campus for Senior Center police. I mean, it's an important campus.
Yeah.
Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Well, I'll make it, and then you guys can go ahead. But I would move that we create a, a working group appointed by the Board of Selectmen with no more than seven members. And whatever the makeup is, we'd have to figure that piece out.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three, two, that carries the makeup. I think a builder, and-
Someone from Historic.
Someone from Historic.
So Historically, you're saying would provide their own?
Yes.
I think we should try to think in terms of deciding the use of that space, because as Mr. Headed said, that's like the primary thing that we need to do.
So I think a member of, as Holly suggested, of Human Services might be helpful. Do we mean-
I think it's just so limited. I mean, the use of buildings is a bigger picture than just this one building.
That's my problem.
Right.
I mean, I think it's, you know, it's Julian's responsibility to figure out where to put his staff and resources. That's why, that seems to me it's got to be his responsibility ultimately. Where is he going to put all of the people that provide the services to the town? And this happens to be one of the buildings.
Well, I think it's a matter, as, as Megan was saying earlier, of the charge to the committee. I mean, if, if it, you know, and certainly if the, if the committee charge is going to be, you know, on the restoration, that the Selectmen's charge can be to work with the municipal use. I mean, we can spell that out.
Well, you also got to admit it's sat for a long time like it is, so it's, it needs a little push.
Oh, I agree.
Yes, and it's, your point is well taken. I don't, I don't think, you know, it's appropriate to utilize municipal buildings for other, you know, independent organizations necessary to have their, have free rental space. But I also think it's not just like it's any old other, I mean, it's a slightly special municipal building that has some other value beyond just sort of the, you know, or has some other considerations beyond just the, so.
It is a registered historic site, given.
Madam Chair?
Please?
I just wonder if you might want to consider a representative from the Finance Committee, because as, as I think about, you know, if we're, if we're looking at the use being purely municipal, then yes, I think it, it sort of makes sense to have the town manager and, and staff do the analysis and present options to the Board of Selectmen. But I, I think what we're going to find is, how much does the community want to invest in the building? Because if the community wants a municipal use on the second floor, the investment's going to be huge. If the community wants a lesser impact use on the second floor, you might not have to have an elevator, and the, and the cost might be a lot less. And that's where it may be helpful to have public input, is, is on that, you know, how much money do we want to spend, and, and what are we getting for this expenditure?
Key point, yeah, key point.
We might find it wants to revert back to what it originally was and give people a shelter for a night.
CPC is a, is a good suggestion by Mr. Jones.
And I actually think, not to put Holly down at all, I don't think Human Services is somewhat appropriate for, by the time this committee is actually making recommendation, I think Human Services will have been in there for four or five months.
I think that, I mean, we would, we would, I think however we craft the charge, we'll want to make sure that there, that the communication is with, you know, that there's that kind of communication, right? But I, I agree. I don't, I don't know that Human Services is going there. I mean, that's going to be-
The other way is I encourage Holly to apply for one of the at-large. I see we have a Store Commission, Finance Committee, CPC, and have four at-large that might include a builder, might include-
That makes seven, right?
But I also want Human Services' voice in terms of what additional needs should be served by that department, and whether that facility shouldn't house those. Because we have this big opioid problem going on, and I'm not sure we're giving them adequate, you know, facility.
But I, I, I think I go back to what you said, then they should be talking to Julian directly of what they need, nothing to do with this committee.
Right, so we could separate it, but still have the open discussion and good communication. The points are both well taken. So what do we have for suggestions for?
I think Doug had said CPC, Peter said Finance Committee, House Historical Commission, and then-
Four at-large.
Is there a conflict of interest with CPC, because they may be a source of the funding? So was that a conflict, having them on the board? I raised the question, I-
So, doesn't CPC have members from other committees as part of their?
Yes.
So why would it be a conflict going the other way?
Well, but they're not funding those committees.
But they're, they're not funding.
No, they are. They can fund, well, they, someone from REC is on-
We will check on that.
So, yeah, so the Recreation Example is, is the closest analogy, and is there a distinction between saying, well, a Recreation Request is coming from the Recreation Department, not the Recreation Committee?
Right.
Don't we also have someone in Housing Authority on the CPC?
So probably not, we'll double check.
Affordable Housing Committee, yes, but the Affordable Housing Committee doesn't request funds.
The distinction is usually made when the person has a financial interest that will benefit from whatever decisions are. You know, CPC has to vet all of these projects, looking at it from the interest of the town and the citizens of the town.
We would be the applicant for any funds anyway.
Right.
Right, right.
And this would just be a source of information for that.
I don't see-
So it's a good question, Ed, but we can confirm.
I think we're good, but we'll check. All right, so that-
Ask a question, were you including a builder in your list, or that's from the at-large, is that what you're saying?
At-large.
I don't know how you put that as a, unless-
You just hope one pops up, because you can't require it.
Right.
So Finance Committee, Historical Commission, CPC rep, and four at-large, for a total of seven.
Okay, so do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure, so I moved that the committee that, that I formally discussed would have one member from Historical Commission, one from Finance Committee, one from CPC, and then four at-large members to be determined at a later date, to be chosen by the-
So we'll take a second and then a comment from the-
Second.
Okay, Malcolm, please?
Malcolm Donald, Precinct Six, is a past member of the Community Preservation Committee. From my experience, the Community Preservation Committee doesn't have a lot of interest in historical preservation. And they primarily just kind of look at applications that are historical when they come by. And I don't think they're going to, I don't, I, I don't think they'd do much on this working group. I think they're, they're in a very good position to evaluate any applications for funds to come to them. But I think it's a, sort of a, to dedicate a seat to them is, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, do we want to amend the motion based upon that feedback and have an, an extra at-large person? Sam, do you have a view on that?
Well, I, I guess I don't understand why a CPC member would be specifically, you know, appointed to that. You know, what, what is CPC going to be doing to support this project? Probably not, nothing, because it'll come out of capital budgets that the town puts together, right?
Not necessarily.
Could be historic funds.
CPC funding too.
But there's, yeah, but there's no reason that, you know, the application couldn't be put in for the historical restoration portion of that effort. But in terms of what the building is being used for, how it's being restored and what have you, who's going to be doing, you know, that's-
You know, unless, unless they're bringing perspective to the table of, you know, some folks want to spend three million dollars to restore it, and other folks want to limit the expenditure, and the CPC's there as a voice of saying, well, we might not have three million available. And I'm obviously grossly exaggerating things just for the purpose of discussion.
All right, so do you want to amend your motion and add an at-large person and take out the CPC person?
I don't really have a dog in the fight for that. I mean, I think Doug suggested, did you have a particular reason why?
More chance for a builder?
You can always get feedback from the CPC itself, directly.
Right, okay, so Doug, are you amending?
Sure, Historical Commission and Finance Committee.
Okay.
Second.
And five at-large.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay.
So on timetable charge?
Oh, that's a good, good point, too.
Yeah, I think-
I still think this committee is not being asked to come up with uses.
Right. So I think, my suggestion would be if we have on a future agenda, so we can put together an actual draft of a charge, and then we can take a look at it, so we're not trying to, you know, at twen, at quarter of eleven, just sort of slap things together.
And, and the point is well been made that the, the use, you know, that the town managers working with and Human Services is sort of, you know, separate, but to be considered and, and that there'd be communication with this committee.
Right, and I think any charge has to outline exactly what we've said here, that, that, you know, that final use is, that's, you know, when we're talking about municipal use, it's under the, you know, that's what the town manager does. If we're talking about further partnerships for further restoration. So I think we need to sort of suss out how we-
May we bring that to you at your first meeting in May?
Perfect.
What day is that? September sixth, May sixth, with applications due May tenth?
Well, you want to accept applications before you confirm the charge of the group, or? A problem with that, that's what you're-
Yeah, I think that's putting cards with one horse.
So on May seventeenth?
Just need to advertise it, that's all.
And then we don't have a meeting, we have a meeting on the twentieth, but we don't have one on the twenty-seventh? So we wouldn't be appointing and interviewing and appointing you until, I guess, June third?
First meeting in June.
Yeah, I mean, I think, that's fine.
I don't-
At May sixth, is that joint with planning?
We don't have a joint with planning scheduled yet.
It's a regular business meeting.
So yes, I think if we can have it for the, the May-
May sixth?
May sixth, so we can, that would be great.
Next. Everybody good with that? Okay, moving on to minutes of meetings. The first is Public Session, November nineteen, two thousand eighteen. Is that the right date? Yeah, I guess so. Any comments for, with respect to amendments or?
Fine to me.
So I'll take that as a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion to approve?
The executive session?
Doug Jones moves. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
April eight, two thousand nineteen.
Those are the Monday ones at Town at Large School, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
April nine, two thousand nineteen.
On the approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session and vote to release.
I don't have the dates on that.
No, work changes may-
On a separate one.
Anything?
A whole, there's a whole list of them.
Okay. Sam, do you want to?
No, I mean, I asked that the street address be included. That, that was the only thing. Because of, and I think they did that, didn't they, in the rewrites?
Street address was included?
We passed that along, so that correction will be made.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So, with that correction, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve and release those documents.
Second. All those in favor?
So, the ones, all twelve dates?
All twelve dates, yes.
Or all twelve dates.
With, with the inclusion of the actual address of where the meeting took place.
Right.
Exactly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, hold up, we'll hold up on that.
We, we can't edit the minutes, and I'm sorry that the minutes were wrong before. But the minutes were accepted. It's, we're only releasing what was already done. We cannot now go back and edit minutes that we had nothing to do with.
Oh, because they've already been accepted, okay.
I mean, that, if we, I'm not sure which-
All we're adding is, is detail. The actual location is specified as Town Hall Square.
Right, but I'm saying if we're, I'm not sure which one from me and Laura we're more worried about. Changing at minutes that had already been approved or-
So, what we'll do is we're going to kick this over, we're going to consult town council, we're not going to vote on this tonight. Uh, next will be individual selectmen's reports.
Well, I'll just give you the highlight of last week. I went and had a meeting in New Bedford with the, uh, Zach Green of Mass Development and also the new guy, Patrick Scally, who is their newly hired harbor waterfront manager, ocean, marine operations manager, excuse me. And, uh, so they had an initial consultant look at the New Bedford state pier, and they were thinking that they knew they needed to replace the pilings. But now that, the end of that report on the piling replacement led to more concerns about the actual condition of the, the bulkhead that's there, the walls around the building. And now a second consult and more engineering has revealed that that wall has completely failed. And the only thing really holding that wall in place is the failing pier. So, it's in much worse condition than it previously thought, although the building itself is in pretty good condition. So, they're a long way off from that being any kind of a port viability. We thought that might be the quicker fix, and then the north terminal would come later. But now it turns out the north terminal, which is permit-ready and received some grant funding and for their initial work to be done, is quickly becoming the more likely place, if any New Bedford freight was to be done, it'll most likely be at the New Bedford, uh, north terminal. So, that's the update on that, and I think that's the only thing important to last week.
Sam?
The only thing I participated in annoying municipal is the town meeting, and, um, so I'm fine this week.
Okay?
Yep. It's ten to eleven. I don't have anything important enough.
I'm just going to make an announcement. I, this was all forwarded to you. I hope you all got it. It's an invitation to EverSource Falmouth plug-in to Spring EV announcement, uh, April twenty-four, eleven, eight, M. It's in the parking lot outside of MBL's Swope Center at five North Street, Woods Hole. And it's, um, just an opportunity to mark the installation of electric vehicle chargers at MBL in Hui as part of their, uh, commitment to a clean, emission-free future. And it's more so about, um, EverSource's charging station program that municipalities and businesses, I believe, can apply for. So, um, it's a, it's quite a financial resource if you have employees, for example, who have electric cars and, or if, as a municipality, we want to promote electric cars. So, um, you're all invited and that's just, uh, I-
Madam Chair, at, at the annual meeting, the state has some opportunities to also subsidize the implementation of electric vehicle charging stations. And I, I think I passed the literature on to Julian. But I think we do need to take a look at it, and I think we need to think about our own municipal fleet and which of those of our, our automobiles, uh, not dump trucks, but, uh, would make sense to start looking at. At least putting in the infrastructure to support those kinds of things.
That's been a recommendation of the energy committee. Maybe we can look at it as part of our strategic plan too.
But I think there are, there are more opportunities for subsidizing than just EverSource, which is a private source. I'd love to see us move that way.
Great. Doug, Mr. Suso?
Uh, yes, thanks, Madam Chair, members of board. As a reminder, uh, selectmen will be hosting a second annual gathering of town boards and commissions for the Potluck Social with the Menor Harbor Yacht Club on this Wednesday evening at five P.M. That was a very successful event, as the board is aware, last year. And, uh, that's been posted as a, uh, selectmen's meeting for quorum purposes, even though no businesses plan to be transacted. The board's next regular meeting will then be on Monday, uh, weekends, April twenty-ninth, for a, a special business meeting which includes two primary items. A discussion with Judge Christopher Welch on the upcoming Falmouth Drug Court. And as, as has been noted already, a joint meeting with multiple entities on the topic of affordable housing. Uh, that'll be here at the selectmen's com- uh, meeting room, of course. Also, I want to, uh, extend my thanks to, uh, Jeremiah Pearson, uh, and Public Works for their extensive work during this past week at adjusting and re-landscaping. The extensive planned entryway welcoming all visitors to Town Hall. And as the rain continues and the sun finally appears, everything will be greening up and we'll be able to see that, uh, new, uh, green welcome mat to, uh, Town Hall. So, my compliments to, uh, the great work that Public Works is involved in. And, uh, they have a very crowded plate this time of the year, so it's, uh, all unfolding. So, uh, thank you to Jeremiah and, uh, some great, great work there being done by everybody. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, all set? Take a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.